All right, good evening, everybody. We're back in action after a snow day last week. I'm glad everybody's safe and staying warm today. We do have a work session here, and before we start with the agenda, I do think it will be good to do, since we didn't do it last week, a preliminary agenda review in case there are questions for staff while they're still here. So for our regular meeting tonight, we'll just kind of go through the major items. Of course, we have some guests and presentations to make at the outset after announcements. We will have our regular citizen comment time, public hearing on wastewater and water, five-year rate plan. The consent agenda only has, what, a couple items, four items on there? Any questions about the consent agenda? Information technology and support services, utilities, grinder pumps, bulb replacement, effluent launder covers, on clarifiers, pretty basic stuff. Any questions there? Unfinished business, we're looking to adopt the ordinance to change the noise control, new chapter 155. It's on our agenda for the work session.
I just wanted to point out that we have the -- the motion was not in the original packet, but it's been handed out.
Yes.
So if people want to put it in sequence.
Right.
That's what this one is.
After the consent agenda there.
It's a topic we're doing tonight.
Sure, it's on our work session.
But this goes in the second here.
Mm-hmm. Okay. New business, introducing an ordinance to increase the water rates, another one for the sewer rates, also introducing the ordinances to amend Chapter 95 excessive use of police services, and amending Chapter 197 rental facilities. Any questions on any of those? Of course, we're going to talk more about the housing and neighborhood legislation tonight. We have a hearing on the water and sewer rates. Item E is the approval of a resolution, the agreement, a lease agreement addendum with Potomac Building LLC with the state of Maryland Department of Social Services that used the Church Street lot. I think that was back there behind your old office, Mr. Munson.
Not far.
Any questions on that one? Solicitation for purchase of city's public improvement bond for 2014. We have the approval of that tonight. But the amendment for the power service agreement with Allegheny is also on the agenda. Approval of the Hagerstown Suns fireworks schedule. Any questions on that one? The approval of Memorial Park Phase Two.
Yeah, I have questions.
Sure.
I see May 5th is a Monday.
Talking about the fireworks schedule?
Mm-hmm. Is there -- I don't recall, unless it's a holiday, approving night fireworks.
Is that the Cinco de Mayo? Is that perhaps the reason why?
But it's a school night. It's like, is...
Well, it may be Cinco de Mayo, but I'm not...
It's a school night.
I don't remember ever approving fireworks on a...
This is May, though.
Was he saying May or is it September?
I could be wrong about that. I would ask that we -- I don't see any reason we can't put this off and get some historical data on that issue. I don't mind any of the weekend nights at all or holiday, you know, July 4th or something like that.
Okay. Anyone else? Any feedback on that one?
Not as it relates to the schedule of fireworks events specifically, but everybody's clearly aware. We have received some correspondence for a proposal for change in possible terms of our current agreement, and I've already expressed my opinion on the city being on the hook for the 120-plus thousand for the next season. I believe some of that is referenced in that most recent correspondence, at least in some manner, and, you know, I think we're talking about details without talking about...
Oh, I think you're right. I think we ultimately have to discuss that. No question about it, Councilman. And also, may I say, Mayor, when I suggest putting this vote off, if we have a majority that won't approve it as is, then don't put it off for my sake.
I wanted to discuss it. I think it's a school night. We haven't done that. Why would we start change now?
Okay.
I'm not aware we've done it.
That's why I say I'm not aware of it either, ever.
At least maybe if the Suns want to give us evidence or something.
So everyone's okay with pulling that from the agenda for right now?
I am.
All right.
Yeah, and I agree with Kristen. We do need to, you know, to move forward on how we're going to handle their request at some point.
Oh, absolutely. It'll be on a future agenda, no doubt. The Memorial Park Phase Two, any questions on that? We have the contracts for 4353 West Washington, the demo and renovations. It's also on our work session agenda here tonight. The approval of management services for the pool and the city funding support for the Maryland Theater. Any questions on any of those items?
If I could, just one correction on the motion on the power service agreement. This is the wholesale power service agreement. It's a two-year term, and the last sentence of the motion says during the aforementioned one-year period...
Mike?
The motion says during the aforementioned one-year...
Year period, it should say two-year period. The dates are right, but the reference to a one-year period should be changed to two.
Okay.
So when we read the motion, if we could just change that, see where I'm talking about, folks?
Good call.
Thank you.
Just real quick, back to 4353 West Washington. Are we documenting that in some fashion?
Documenting?
Well, I mean, all of us were able to tour the building, at least, you know, that which is intact and that which is, you know...
Comes safe.
Yeah, or places that it's just pieces at this point. And I think everybody generally agreed with the direction for removal of that rear part. It clearly, you know, improves the viability of that structure, but we often discuss, you know, the expense of this type of investment, and I just wondered if we're documenting, you know, a building like this as it goes through the process to say, you know, it goes from the condition that we saw it...
Oh, like before and after?
Yeah, to the condition that it has a viability to be.
It seems like staff is documenting well in terms of the pictures we receive and the packets. It's on our agenda, actually, for the work sessions, so we can have staff give us more feedback when that comes up for the agenda. It's a good question. Any other...
If staff doesn't, I'm sure the newspaper will.
Any other questions about the agenda for our regular session? All right, we'll jump right in, then, to the Historic City Park Neighborhood's First Decorative Street Sign Project. Bring forward those folks. I know this was originally on our agenda for December 5th, but snow keeps hampering this effort, so appreciate you guys being patient.
We'll keep fighting above and making sure to get this done.
There you go.
A good evening. We wanted to take an opportunity to brief the mayor and council on a Neighborhood First Beautification Project that's spearheaded by the Historic City Park Neighborhood's First Group. And if I can just recognize a few of the members of the group that are here tonight in the audience. We have Heather Holman and Mac Gross. And this is a project their group's been working on over the past few years, and among many other projects that they actually have carried out in their neighborhood. The mayor and council can refresh the mayor and council's memory on some city park projects that they've carried out successfully, such as the traffic calming project on Summit Avenue to help reduce speeding in the area. They worked with our Parks and Recreation Department on the Arts in the Park program in the city park to also attract residents and visitors into city park for family-friendly entertainment. And these also have carried out previous decorative street sign projects in the area. What we wanted to do tonight was highlight the project concept and make the mayor and council aware of what they are working on and ask if they have asked the mayor and council if there are any questions or concerns. If you can look to the overhead or also in your packet material, the idea is to have street signs that would be something that would fit the area, maybe more of a historic-looking sign. It will also, you know, be able to accommodate a hanging basket underneath the street sign. And the proposed locations are not approximate, they're just approximate on the map, but there would be roughly seven signs along Virginia Avenue, which is right adjacent to City Park. The group would be utilizing funding from the funding that the city provides, all neighborhood, each neighborhood group, the annual allocation of $1,000 per year. They've also been in contact with some local businesses that would be providing donations of materials. And Eric Dyke has also been involved in the planning process with the group, and Eric's agreed to work with his staff to actually do the installation of the signs, and that includes the building of the brick piers and also installations of the sign from there. And he's reiterated the Public Works Department is capable of that. Funding gap for the project would be covered through the sponsorship packet that you also see included in the memo material. Neighborhood First Groups can work with DCED staff, namely Karen Giffen, on sponsorships, and that's something we think we can pull off and make this project go.
And we are creating a fundraising package for this project. Any Neighborhood First who gets a project that is approved, we would create a package such as this, and then the funds would go through a designated line, so it doesn't go into the general fund because it would be a designated gift. And in the package is all, we have a disclosure statement and the ways that people can sign up for the project.
That's great. Mr. Munson.
Jonathan, this is a good idea. This is done, as you probably know, in Annapolis, extensively in Annapolis and downtown Annapolis. It looks great. Let me just ask you a couple of quick questions, though. How do the flowers get taken care of? Will city's staff have to do that, or will there be an independent contractor to make sure they get water when they need water and get trimmed when they need trimmed?
That's something we would have to discuss with Eric, but I would see as a potential partnership where maybe some of the group members would even possibly volunteer to take care of that. We've had other groups in the past maintain, I think, some islands and some public right-of-way areas with vegetation in the past.
Because if the flowers were to die, it would really look quite bad, be the wrong This really is a good idea. Why are we considering this for other parts of Hagerstown? Are we considering this for, say, Memorial Park?
We can talk to Rodney about that, and this was, this project in particular, was an idea that was developed by the City Park Group, so it's definitely something we could look at with other neighborhood groups or see if it's something...
And downtown, and downtown. And finally, a good place, I kind of went down and looked at this, where these would be, and a good place would be for one other would be Howard Street. Now, I admit, it's not real, real close to the park, but it's close enough to the park that it kind of sets a tone as you drive past it toward downtown. So if you take a look at that as well.
Okay.
And congratulations to the Neighborhood First Group, who is willing to take on this task. Thank you.
Mr. Alshire.
Are these, are these proposed to be different than the signs on Summit?
Yes, they'll be a little different because the signs on Summit do not have the brick pier.
Was there a reason for selecting signs that will look different than the ones on Summit?
I would probably answer the group on that. I believe one was cost prohibitive initially when they were doing the Summit Avenue signs. It was less expensive to just do the regular signs that you see.
Understand.
And with, I think, just maybe trying to invigorate the area with some things that maybe pop more, they thought of the idea of the brick signs, and they were able to, I think, go around to some local businesses and maybe see a light at the end of the tunnel when the businesses agreed to do some donations of the materials.
Okay.
They're mostly good.
Yeah. So there isn't an issue of consistency?
No.
Okay.
The poles and the scrolls are not much.
Right, yeah, I see that.
Very nice.
You have in the package shown six or seven locations, but they're shown at the intersection. Will they be at the location that they are at now? In other words, if you see in the picture on the back, some of these are sitting, you know, at the corner of folks' yards, and, you know, if they're not going to be sitting in exactly the same place that the signs are at now, I would assume you've reached out to those homeowners in which they either are sitting at now or will be sitting in once implemented to say, hey, we're going to build a, you know, one-by-one, you know...
I'm going to put Tim on the spot.
Yeah, I agree with, these essential signs are a little bit substantial, existing signs.
Understand.
We would think they'd put them right at the back of the sidewalk, so they'll probably be within five, 10 feet of the existing signs.
Right, but a sign on the sidewalk right away is different than putting it in somebody's yard. And that's what I'm curious about. I understand the public right of way. What I'm asking is, are you going to move the sign physically from where it's at now that may be, you know, in the sidewalk itself and put it in somebody's actual grass space?
It could be in that spit grass.
And I assume we'll reach out to those folks and say, hey, even though it's in the public right of way, I understand that, we'll reach out and say, hey, we're building a structure in your yard.
Yeah, we could do that.
I would assume we would.
I would hope so.
We use it in the...
Okay.
Saying in other words, do some outreach so it's not a surprise to the property owner.
Yeah, we've had some occasions where it's been a surprise to homeowners when they show up and find out that they actually have a right of way going through their property and trees are getting cut down, for instance.
We did do that on some map, we followed that.
Right, and that's all I'm asking. And I think that's all, yeah.
All right.
Oh, I would assume that somebody has sort of taken this view, you know, this proposed type down to ensure some consistency with City Park. In other words, you know, City Park has...
Fit the character.
Right, fit the character of the park.
Yeah, I think that's basically why they were looking for something to design, like this, a little more rustic.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's great. I think it sets a good precedent for other neighborhoods as doing, I hope we can get a good partnership there.
Absolutely. Thank you. The neighbors should be commended out there in Historic City Park Neighborhood. Good work. Any other questions or feedback? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to the contracts for 4353 demolition, renovations, and asbestos removal.
Sitting in for Rodney tonight, he was unable to be here, so Tim and I wanted to take an opportunity to brief the mayor and council on the contract slated for approval for the demolition reconstruction project and asbestos removal contracts at 43 to 53 West Washington Street. And to answer Councilman Alshire's question, we do have a lot of documentation. We would track all of our funding and investment into the property and also document with photos along the way of before and after. Two contracts for the project will be, one for asbestos removal, and the second contract would be for demolition of the rear two-story wing of the west structure, and then also rebuild of the entire rear facade or back wall. If you can also look on the overhead screen, it's hard to see, but I'll try to do a laser pointer here that highlights the section outlined in red would be the section that will be demolished, and also part of the project would be the section that's highlighted blue will be a new roof on the rear of the property.
Is that that big open space?
Yes.
That we went into?
Yes.
That looks newer?
Yeah, it's actually on the east side of the property, but it connects into the longer west building.
Will you show me again what's going to be demolished?
Sure, the section here that's, it's hard to see, but it is outlined, there's a light outline of red there. That building will be gone, and then you'll have a new wall along the back.
Okay.
And the section here in blue, as Councilman Alshire mentioned, that's over the large open space. That needs a new roof. It's leaking quite a bit.
Gotcha. I will reiterate my preference that we remove that structure.
The in-between part?
Right, that structure you're looking at there on the right is the structure you're talking about.
Yeah, that's the section slated for a new roof.
I will reiterate my recommendation, my preference, and I just, I don't know what to say.
The section that you can see here, the two-story, that's the area that will come down, and the section to the right and a little bit further over, which you can't see in the photo, that back wall would connect both buildings.
Have a new facade?
Yes, and a rendering of what the facade would look like. I'll slide that up there as well.
Are those windows?
Yes.
That's much better.
And so is this, is that the extent of the work, then, that the city is going to be doing in order to get it ready to market, if you will?
We're actively marketing the property now, even before the demolition and rebuild of the wall is going to occur, but...
There's all the bricks.
Yeah, we also envision upon the seeking of a state community legacy grant. We're still working with the state on that. We're also looking to do some facade renovations to the front and then some, maybe some stabilization to the interior portion that's open and exposed.
Because I was just adding up the funding stream that's listed in the motion here, and you got about $417,680 without any more community legacy money. And then there's the total project cost, here's 267, 940, but I noticed there was a, at least a request anyway, for $55,000 in possible change orders. I don't know if that's part of what's included here.
Yeah, for contingency funds, just the technicalities of a project like this, once you tear something down like that, I think it is somewhat inevitable, you're going to run into some change order, so I believe Rodney was requesting that for the flexibility of what made him up.
But then that pretty much takes a huge chunk of that $418,000, so that's what the other $100,000 from community legacy will go to continue more renovations to get it...
Correct.
Marketable.
The cost for the roof over this other section, you have that listed here. I see the $50,000, but it's not clear.
Yeah, I believe the total asbestos removal cost for the contract would be $70,000, and I think the total cost for the demolition, wall reconstruction, and then re-roof is all lumped together from the Milton Stamper bid. So unfortunately, that is not broken down in the consent form.
I mean, I, well, maybe others aren't interested. I'm interested to see how much that, 197,000 dollars, is that right?
Yes, that's the demolition, wall reconstruction, and re-roof.
I'd be interested to understand how much of that's for the roof.
We could inquire with the contractor on that.
What type of roof is it?
We're looking at a white TPO roof, and that would actually be a roof that's what we put on the back of, or on the roof at 36 to 40.
Okay.
It's a roof that tends to be more...
The white membrane stuff?
Yes, it's white, it's more energy efficient, wouldn't absorb as much heat in the summertime. A lot of, and it's a negligible cost between a typical rubber roof and the white TPO roof.
Okay. And what will, the part we're tearing down, the footprint of that, do we have any plans for what that's going to become? Will that be paved, or it be...
At this time, the plan is just to simply have it stoned.
Okay, so it'll just be loose gravel by the finish, for now?
Yes, and I think the design of the rear wall, that's a hardy plank material, it's meant for flexibility for when we are able to sell it to a private developer, and they will be able to make alterations with windows or additional doors if necessary at a minimal cost compared to a brick wall.
If you don't have this now, could you get it to me, the square footage that that roof covers, approximately?
Okay.
You know, it's, it looks like it's a rectangular shape. You can just run the... Two stories or one story? It's one story, isn't it? Or is it two? One story.
The section that would be re-roofed, that's one story. It's a large, yeah, the large...
Because that goes clear back, right? When you enter, when you enter, and then it goes clear back.
Now, you got the part that doesn't have anything, which is open to the sky.
And that's not supposed to be open to the sky, right? That's not intended to be a courtyard in the middle of that building.
Correct.
We're not intended to reconstruct that.
Not in this contract.
No.
Yeah, the section that's blue, that's actually open space. It connects to the rear of the company that houses the Potomac Bead, or the rear of the building that houses the Potomac Bead.
In that, in that picture where it says 43 to 47, that's the open space, right?
Yes, the open area will be right in here.
That's where there's no roof any longer.
Correct.
And there's not a plan to put a roof over that in this contract?
Not in this contract, correct.
Just want to make sure that was clear.
But there's water infiltration right now in the blue area.
Yes, yeah, we, there's been active water penetration for quite some time, and especially during the wintertime, it's, with the snow, it can be significant.
But with the one that's going to require a new roof, that, you go straight back, correct? Am I correct that when you go into that building, it take, because it's long, it's real long, and if somebody wants to do something like, for instance, it's supposedly back, when Ashley was looking at it, it was going to be a restaurant, all right? So you would have all of that that was in the front as far as your seating and everything, and how much more of that? I mean, I'm looking at somebody that really wants to do something and, you know, go all out, and that's why I'm saying, Kristen is saying, you know, I'd rather just take it down, but I see the point if somebody really can do something with it, in hopes that that's what I would like to see. Somebody, you know, that would, and then take the upper part and do whatever as living space or whatever else.
Yeah, that's part of the goal. We're trying to remove as many barriers to redevelopment as possible, but provide as much flexibility.
Correct, but that's what I'm saying, Jonathan, but to go back, that gives you more as far as more room, if you in fact did something on that.
And I just look at it as you've got, you've got two properties here, and you've got X amount of funds, and we can sit here and look at this and say, well, this really isn't our money, it's CDPG, but I just look at this and say, you know, where can I get the biggest bang for the buck for redevelopment of this property? And for me, touring that property, it's clearly in 49 to 53, and we're spending a significant amount of the money we have on a one-story structure that's significantly water-infiltrated, significant damage, is connected to a piece of the property that has no walls or roof or floor any longer, and we're spending a good lion's share of money to save it.
Just one item to note, with the acquisition of the property being state community legacy funds and community development block grant funds, and the also use of community development block grant funds for a portion of this project, demolition can present some hurdles with historic trust requirements in Section 106.
Which isn't hurdling us for demolishing two-story structure twice as big behind it. We're not taking facades out or anything.
Jonathan, you mentioned that you've been actively marketing the property. Have you had any bite yet?
Andrew Sargent handles that. I believe he does have some inquiries, and I believe he has taken some folks on tours of the building.
Certainly, I step in the right direction, and I want to thank you for moving this along as expeditiously as you've had. It wasn't too long ago when we purchased this property. This area that was on the other, was on the other picture, is one of the most disgusting areas in downtown, and it really takes away from the Maryland Theater and the School for the Arts, so if this is completed, it's going to make a much more attractive downtown area.
Significant visible impact to the area.
Any other questions or comments? And this will be on our regular agenda for this evening to approve the contracts. All right, thank you. Next up is the noise ordinance. I think we just had this on for a work session to just make sure there's any other, all the questions are answered and we're ready to take a vote on this.
Thank you. One question.
Sure, go ahead.
Kathy, I was sitting in my office the other day, and I heard this god-awful squealing of wheels. Somebody was apparently trying to press someone.
That was Bruce trying to get out of City Hall as soon as possible.
Oh, it was, okay. At any rate, is that covered under this ordinance somewhere? At any rate, is that covered under this ordinance somewhere?
No, the motor vehicles moving in the roads is, is covered under state law.
It is? So it doesn't get any better or worse? Whatever, okay, thank you.
Yeah, because I was asking her about open pipes and stuff like that on various vehicles. Well, open pipes are the same way.
The Harley's.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the noise ordinance before we take a vote tonight?
That'd be a vote to adopt tonight.
Right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, the housing and neighborhoods legislation. Get an update on that. I think we need clarification. Yeah. Okay, so we have this item on for introduction this evening. It's been updated in terms of the issues some council members had with excessive bureaucracy, so streamlining the process.
I think that was done very well, Mayor, but I'm a little disappointed to see that it looks like we have a whole new aspect of this ordinance now. It has never even been discussed unless I'm misunderstanding it. But now I see that our crime-free ordinance has now also become a code administration ordinance. So now the same ramifications of three crimes would take place if you have three notices of weeds in the ear? Is that how I read this?
Yes, and that was discussed, I presented that concept to the mayor and council, I believe, on the 7th. And the consensus that night was to include the, the language. Moved forward with that and included it.
And I think that was in response to, you know, we all get the emails and the phone calls for the same people who create the same issues with trash and other kinds of nuisances, basically, in the neighborhoods. So I think that was meant to address those kinds of calls for service as well.
I, I just have a problem with it. I, I, you know, I thought we had a code administration and I thought we had penalties for violations of the code. And so now I see we're taking it one step further. And this has been a crime-free ordinance this whole time, and I just...
I don't think the two are, the crime-free aspect of it is separate from the nuisance section.
But what's the difference for, for these folks than homeowners? Than a homeowner who has the same issue? That, that doesn't rent but has the weeds, the rubbish in the gar, garbage constantly? Many of us can identify properties that are owner-occupied properties that were out of baiting all the time. I just, I, I am more than willing and ready to vote for the ordinance as it was before we added this in here, especially as I understand it, somebody who's a property manager who manages a multitude of properties has one problem with weeds or folks in his place and he's put out of business. And I just, I, I personally won't vote for it with the, with the, that in there. I would prefer we find a way, if, if we need to address that, then I think we need to address that. But all the statistics, for instance, we got on chronic nuisance properties related to crime, didn't relate to this. And then I think if we want to discuss penalties or further penalties outside of what's already in our code for, for these types of violations, I'd be happy to have those discussions. And if the majority thinks this should go in, you know, I'm not going to criticize anybody for it. I, I just think it's, it's overreaching and goes too far.
Lou, what do you mean when you say put out of business? You used that term a minute ago.
Okay, well, and people tell me if I'm wrong. I have somebody who owns, a property manager, who's living is to manage properties. And they manage 20 properties. They get four complaints about weeds. And the city decides they didn't do what needed to be done to get it fixed. They lose their license to rent. And they no longer can be a property manager of any of the properties in the city of Fagerstown. They're out of business.
Let's see if we can clarify that, just, do we all understand it that way?
They lose their, certain their crime-free certification if they violate Chapter 95.
Which means they can't...
But let's explain how they get there. And I'd ask John or Mark maybe to address that, because there's notices that go out.
Chapter 95 applies to all properties, not just rental properties. So to answer Councilmember Metzner's concern about who it applies to, Chapter 95 applies to all properties and all types of properties, commercial, owner-occupied. The code administration track does, does two things. One, if a particular property receives a notice for weeds, we'll use that example. And then in that same 12-month period, has to be told again. You have another incident of, of your grass is over 10 inches high. And then has to be told a third time. And each time they're being told in writing, this exists, this exists, this exists. Then the third, after the third time, they get a designation of chronic nuisance. The fourth time, the fourth time they get a notice from the city in that 12-month period, there'd be a $100 fee assessed for the use of that city service. The fifth time, a $250 fee. The sixth time that we have to tell someone at a particular property, it'd be a $500 fee.
And according to the data that you presented, only 13 properties had six or more notices of violation in 2013?
That's fine, I have no problem with that and that, that's essentially been the law, right?
In other words, you're saying, if we have to keep going out for the same code enforcement violations, you are a chronic nuisance in the neighborhood?
No, that's fine, and that's the way it's always been, as I understand it. We've always had that issue with the chronic nuisance, is that right?
Not, not for the code stuff, sir, we have not.
Okay, but we're, and that would apply to homeowners. What I want to know is now we're, instead of a homeowner, we're on the fourth notice of weeds or high grass to a landlord?
Yes, sir.
What are the ramifications to that landlord as it relates to his crime-free housing certification?
I believe we have it termed as a residential operator certification.
Okay.
And they could lose that for failing to manage their property.
Under the understanding from January 7th, when the, you know, Mayor and council tabled this in December, you had a discussion January 7th. And what we took from that was there was a direction of staff to try to consolidate rental licensing and crime-free under the umbrella of the nuisance property.
Correct.
With the understanding that code enforcement issues and problems create chronic nuisances for many of these neighborhoods just as much as a calls for police service. That's how we understood that. So when we came back on 14th, and I don't remember John talking about two separate but parallel tracks, one being code, one being crime or calls for police, leading to being designated as a chronic nuisance property.
And I certainly am not one here criticizing staff. I'd be the first one to say, hmm, I guess it, it didn't get to my brain. I understand it was discussed. I have no issues whatsoever with the penalties of the $500. I don't have issues with talking about increasing those penalties, especially for you get somebody with five, six times. I have no problems with that at all. My concern is the potential, the, the people who don't trust government have reason to fear, and that is, I could lose my ability to earn a living. You know, there's one thing about telling somebody, and I understand that that's what we're voting for on the crime-free phase of it. I, I see a huge difference between somebody repeatedly having tenants that are, are committing crimes. And there are certain ways you need to handle that. I think if you have a heavy enough fine, that you can handle these other issues without threatening the livelihood of someone. And that, that's my recommendation. In that sense that it be separated out from, from that. That's, that would be my preference, but again, that's, that's only me speaking.
And John, to clarify, the fourth viola-, the third violation on a code issue, they're designated as a chronic nuisance property, just as they would with the third violation on calls for HPD.
Yes.
The fourth results in a fine, it doesn't automatically result in losing their certification?
It, it says that they achieve that status and, and they're eligible to be losing that certification. In discussing this with the chief, whether it's the code administration track or the, the crime-free track, from a staff perspective, it brings the problem property owners to the table. And it's, it's one of those tools, if you will, to, to actually let someone know this is serious and, and it brings them to the table.
I understand, I just think a significant fine brings somebody to the table too. That's...
No, it doesn't, Lou, it, it doesn't. Property at 600 North Mulberry, we have battled this and battled this for a long time. He's paid over $10,000 in fines, okay? John finally got him that, okay, now we're going to start doing something. Go look at the property, it's horrible. Now you're saying taking a man's money away from him, okay? A person who's going to be working for a landlord. If I am property management and I know that I have to maintain these properties, then it should be my responsibility to make sure that everything is in place. That means cleaning it up, it means all of it, Lou. We continue to let it go. We are not exempt, the property owners, as you and I, if we come up with a violation. The only thing is, is that with this guy, it falls under what now is being proposed. But he should be on his toes, he or she should be. That's the name of the game. I, I don't have a problem with it and, you know, I just, it has got, something has got to be done. And it's the back and forth continually, just like when I said about, why is it that a property management can come and set in and not the person who owns the dwellings or dwelling?
Well, clearly, the person who is going to be fined under this is going to be the homeowner, not, not the, not the property manager.
Right, right, but you're saying that person who's going to lose his job, but that would be the property management person, correct? The landlord would be getting rid of him.
The, the other problem I have with it, and, and rubbish and garbage is an example. You know, what stage of the game do you identify? Right now, we have problems with people putting garbage out on the street on the wrong day. And you know what, we can't identify who did it. So now you have rubbish out somebody's place, somebody complains, landlord's notified, and he goes to his tenant and says, I didn't do it. Versus tenants being charged with doing criminal acts. You can identify who did it, you can place blame, you can say fix it. In, in the crime-free ordinance we're about to do, we have a requirement that there's a crime-free clause in there that says you can be evicted if you do this. It's not so easy to solve a problem when somebody comes to a landlord and says, you have garbage outside of your place, and the guy goes to the tenant and says, you can't do this, and the tenant says, I'm not, somebody dropped it off there last night. That's, that's a concern that I have. And maybe I'm being overly concerned, but it is, it is the concern I have, especially because I think you can solve it in different manners. Whereas the crime-free is a different story. That's, that's...
The focus of being, trash being on a payment, compared to rubbish and all of the others, weeds and everything else, that is right, weeds you can identify. Trash that's being put out front, no, you cannot, I've argued that point, okay? I wish that we could, but we can't. But when you're looking at properties that do have a lot that is on the property, don't tell me that somebody's just pitching the stuff over. I, I can't buy that. What is being set out, we continue to, our staff has got to pick up. Where you and I are going to pay for staff to come and pick it up. That's, you know, I, I just don't have a problem with the incorporation of that.
I, I agree with Penny. I think everybody has a responsibility of cleanliness in their neighborhoods. One of the things that, that's happened since I've been councilman, and I'm kind of like the newest kid on the block, is I get calls, got calls all the time during the summer about trash and weeds in particular, and having it removed. And somebody's got to be responsible to the extent possible. It occurs to me that we meet here every week. If we're overreaching, we can, we can fix it in, in a future period of time. I, I think this is a, a good piece of legislation and it, it will add to the quality of the life in this city.
Mr. Burbaker?
Well, I would suggest, I think we've gone through so many iterations and, you know, staff has worked hard to try, try to meet what we think we want. And, and this is all of us, and we've gone back and forth. I think what we're doing tonight, well, I know what we're doing tonight is introducing this. It can't, we won't be adopting it for another month.
Right.
And I want to introduce it because every session that we don't introduce it, we delay it another month. I respect councilman members' concerns and we can still, we have three work sessions between now and then. If people want to bring things to the table, no, we have three in February.
Do we have three?
We're not meeting on the 18th.
We have three. No, we only have two. Yeah.
Got to read your preliminary agenda, Mr. Burbaker.
I certainly have no problem with its introduction because I agree with you when he...
But we don't have to, on the other hand, if somebody has objection, is that the rest respect? It's been introduced, but, but it doesn't have to be adopted within a month, as I understand it.
Well, and you can amend it like you did with the noise ordinance.
Oh, I know we can amend, well, we can amend it during the period before we adopt it, if we so choose. But I think we need to, 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 to fish if we don't, at least, you know, we can't cut bait until we fish, you know, so.
So you support the introduction tonight?
I support introduction and, and that I, I will continue to, to look at objections or loopholes, I mean, we're, we're trying a lot of stuff, but we're trying to address a serious problem, you know, in our city about the way it's maintained and complaints we get.
It's like the broken window theory, right?
Right, the New York theory.
Okay, right.
Right, the New York theory.
That's exactly right.
Fix the broken window and you start to get respect for the neighborhood.
You know, and whether you like it or not, I still say, a clean community is a community that people do, does want to see.
Sure, it increases community pride, sure.
But at the same time, there can be procedural issues, there can be things that we can look at, or maybe the penalties aren't fair, or maybe we've missed something. We've got, you know, at least a month to try to work that out. But if we put it off one more time, which I think we've done, we've done two or three months now. We put it off, I think.
I, I agree with you, Councilman.
So let's introduce it.
And I will vote for its introduction because that is what we're doing is introducing it. And I've said repeatedly that I support the ordinance, and I do. And we'll work and see whether, how it ends up when we get itself to the final vote.
And I would encourage you, Mr. Metzner, to work with staff in terms of any questions you have about the language or any clarification you need. Mr. Alshar, we haven't heard from you yet on this.
I'm fine with introduction. I wanted to introduce it three months ago.
You're okay with including code enforcement and the chronic nuisance?
With code enforcement, we have certainly shifted from a conversation, you know, and that rests squarely with folks that preferred, you know, that we look at not creating more new legislation, that we try and work within the confines of what we have. And so for me, while I certainly understand how it would apply to all properties, especially for the, the provisions and changes in Chapter 95, clearly the conversation that we set out in its origination was not to annually post a list of property owners that, that get a notice for not mowing their grass three times. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, but that, that wasn't my understanding for what we originally set out to do. And if that's what the structure of these changes provide for, you know, I, I'm not real sure that... sure that that is what we intended. If you operate a property in which you own or rent, residential or commercial, in which there have been violations for criminal activity, say, you know, reoccurrences of the sale of drugs out of your property, clearly, that is a different type of nuisance to the neighborhood than a neighbor called upon to code enforcement to come out and check the height of your grass. I just see that.
The other one's a little bit more obvious because of the high grass or the weeds, and you're right.
And the difficulty for me is I'm trying to marry the two, because now that we have decided to include this in existing legislation rather than keep it out and etc., what we've done is we have associated specifically those new sections of Chapter 95 to the intended changes that we have incorporated now in 197, and I'm not certain that we have accomplished to appropriately separate the levels in which we deem conditions of nuisance within our community to be.
Can I ask a clarifying question? As staff work on this over the next several weeks, is it the intent of the body to remove that completely, or the other thing that it does by including it in excessive use of services is to have a fee assigned for city staff, and it is our limited staff, responding to the same properties over and over?
On code issues.
On the code issue. So I'm asking, is it the trigger of loss of certification that is the major concern?
That's my concern, yes, that's my concern. And candidly, I think the biggest culprits that I've seen, and it just could be me, but it seems to me the biggest culprits that I've seen on this whole arena, that I think Councilman Alshar has brought up in the past, that I'd really like to see us be able to attack, is foreclosed properties owned by banks who don't care. And if you're talking about residential neighborhoods where you have this issue, you know, I think the banks are the biggest, the biggest problems we have, but yes, that's my opinion. I agree, I have no problems with the penalty phase, but it's the tie into the, to that.
Here's the way I'd, if I might procedural thing, I would, you know, we've gone back and forth so many times, I'd like to take what we introduced tonight, I presume, it sounds like we're going to introduce it. And when we make changes, indicate possible changes, bracket them, underline them, don't just take them out, because I want to see what we're doing, put it all together, structure, see what the whole is, and it's very hard to do when it just disappears. So I would just like to see, if members express concerns, I don't mind being, that being put in italics, or, and here's what we recommend doing about it, a red line treatment, or whatever, but I like to deal with documents where you see the changes and you make marginal notes to why, or memorandum with recommendations. That's a, you know, because I...
Absolutely, sir.
I'd like to see them for discussion rather than try and move tonight to change it.
Absolutely, absolutely, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, because I think that to some degree, with these proposed changes, staff may be setting themselves up on the code administration side for a degree of refereeing that they have not been accustomed to before. That, I think, is a concern.
You're saying refereeing?
Yes.
And is your, I just want to make sure I understand your main objection in terms of the chronic nuisance property list, Section 95-4, is that what you're talking about? That you don't think if you have three code violations in a year, that we should necessarily publish that as a chronic nuisance?
I think clearly the spirit in which we had intended those parts of legislation to occur are different from the definitions now we have married them into. In other words, you got to take, it isn't just 95-4, but then you got to reference back to the new definitions in 95-2, and then you've got to incorporate it into how it is read into the new section in 197, I don't know, what is it, 197 dash, I don't know what it is, I think it's 11. And I, but again, trying to accomplish them with two pieces of existing legislation.
197-10 laws of certification.
Because they definitely have different connotations now, that we have married them into two existing ordinances and tried to cross-reference them between the two.
And we don't have to do that. I mean, the main concern that I think we talked about, about marrying things, is not having to have two separate registrations. That, to me, was what the main concern was, that we didn't want to have, the same people have to register twice, but I still think that we could cleanly put this into the code enforcement section and put whatever penalties we want on it, but we'll discuss it in work sessions, it's...
Okay, so it sounds like we're good to go for introduction tonight, and then we'll keep working on it.
Right, and I would like also to be assured that we've streamlined the process, but I don't want to get into it tonight.
I do know that, you know, there are many neighbors of mine in my neighborhood, everyone in their neighborhood could probably point to people who are just sick and tired, being sick and tired of the same people creating these nuisances in their neighborhood, and they're looking to us to take effective action to address it. So I'm glad that we're looking to move forward to introduce this legislation and to continue to improve it and refine it in the meantime. So, any other questions or feedback before we take a quick break?
Thank you all very much.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, everybody, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item of business is our invocation, and then following that will be the pledge to the flag, so if you don't mind standing as you are able. As we gather here this evening, may we be ever mindful of opportunities to render ourselves to the services of fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which we build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make this a better place to live. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
No problem at all, thank you.
Just a few announcements, the rules of procedure that we're operating under were adopted on September 24, 2013. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. And just to overview our meeting schedule for February, we'll have a work session on the 4th and the 11th, we'll have no meeting on Tuesday, February 18th, and then we'll have a regular session on Tuesday, the 25th. And at this time, we have two special recognitions this evening. The first is in recognition of the 200th anniversary of the naming of the city of Hagerstown. And so I want to read a certificate of special recognition, and who's coming to accept on behalf? The city clerk will accept this on behalf of the city of Hagerstown. This is to recognize the 200th anniversary of the incorporation of Hagerstown, Maryland. Whereas Hagerstown was founded in 1762 by Jonathan Hager, a gunsmith, fur trader, farmer, militia officer, and politician. After settling here in the 1730s, he quickly increased his wealth and expanded his land holdings, acquiring over 10,000 acres, a portion of which he used to lay out plans for the town. The town was originally named Elizabeth Town in honor of his wife. And whereas in December of 1813, Governor Levin Winder introduced a bill in the Maryland General Assembly to reincorporate Elizabeth Town and officially rename it Hagerstown. This law was passed by the Maryland Legislature on January 26, 1814, and was codified under the laws of Maryland, Chapter 121, Section 1. And whereas, the first election for city officials in accordance with this law was held soon thereafter, and Henry Little, Richard Reagan, George Brumball, Charles Schaffner, and John McElhenney were elected the first commissioners of Hagerstown. McElhenney, by the way, was the father of the guy who invented Tabasco sauce. The commissioners elected Henry Little, the first moderator, similar to a mayor, and Charles Schaffner was made the first city treasurer. The commissioners appointed George Bauer, the first city clerk of the newly reincorporated town. And whereas, on January 26, 2014, we marked the 200th anniversary of the reincorporation of the city and official renaming Elizabeth Town as Hagerstown. And now, therefore, with the support of the city council, I, David Geisberts, the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize January 26, 2014, to be the 200th anniversary of the reincorporation of the town and the 200th anniversary of the official adoption of Hagerstown as the name of this city. So, thank you all for indulging me in that little history of Hagerstown, but it is quite a milestone, and I look forward to the next 200 years. Thanks, trusty city clerk.
It will be displayed with the...
With pride. And now for the, I'm sure this is the reason why everybody's here tonight, we do want to offer a certificate of appreciation to Tom Reiford, who is leaving the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Tom, come on up here.
He stole my best line. You stole my line, I thought they were all here for me.
Yeah, yeah. So this is a certificate of appreciation for Thomas B. Reiford, for 10 years of service on behalf of the tourism industry of Hagerstown and Washington County. Whereas Thomas B. Reiford began as the president and CEO of Hagerstown, Washington County Convention and Visitors Bureau in early 2004. And whereas during his tenure at the helm of the CVB and through his efforts and advocacy, the tourism industry grew in Hagerstown and Washington County. And whereas Tom Reiford has consistently been a great cheerleader for Hagerstown and Washington County, working tirelessly on behalf of all the citizens of this region, he helped increase the number of visitors, increase visitor spending, increase occupancy at local lodging establishments, and also increase the amount of tax revenue generated by the industry and paid for by visitors. And whereas the CVB, through his direction, has greatly increased marketing and the number of tourism initiatives, Tom Reiford has helped bring millions of visitors to Hagerstown and Washington County who stayed and played, stopped and shopped, and made wonderful Maryland memories. Tom Reiford will be greatly missed as he moves on to a new position. And now, therefore, with the support of the city council, I, David Geisberts, the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize Thomas B. Reiford for his leadership, service, and dedication, and express our appreciation for his commitment and wisdom on behalf of all the citizens of this city and county. So Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it.
And I know you would like to say a few words.
It's quite an audience, I imagined it was just going to be me and you, and, but thank you all very much for being here, it's been a wonderful 10 years. Tourism is an important industry, it is currently our second-largest industry in the entire county. About 6,700 people work in what's called the leisure and hospitality classification, and it's never been better than this year and last year for the most number of visitors we've had coming to Washington County. I wish my mother was here to hear this, because it sure would have made her proud. Thank you all very, very much, I appreciate it, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, Lou. Thank you, sir. Thanks for the big turnout, yeah.
The lists.
You want a photo? Okay.
You want the whole council? No? Penny says no.
It's an awful lot of things going on, yeah.
All right, one, two, three.
Of course, one for Facebook.
One, two...
Did it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Code, there's a separate one for the public here, correct? Okay, the next item on the agenda is our citizen comments. We do have quite a lengthy list of folks who've signed up to speak, so I just want to remind everybody that citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual, and I have my trusty iPad up here that has a timer on it that I'll use, and there's a red circle, so when the red circle is almost complete, if you're standing at the podium, that means your time is almost up. And also, meetings are televised and recorded, your comments will be on air and on tape and on YouTube. So with that, the first person on the agenda signed up to speak is Charles Burkett. And if you don't mind, when you come forward, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Charles Burkett, I'm at 15 North Locust Street here in Hagerstown. When does my time start?
I'll restart it, go ahead.
I made some notes here, and I'm going to read fast. I'm here to speak up against this new ordinance. In a note I read, it was mentioned that the council did not care what people thought who did not live within city limits. I hope that's not the case. First, although I may not live within city limits for the majority of my life, I did. I see Hagerstown as my hometown, when people ask me where I'm from, I don't say Hewitt's Crossroads, I say Hagerstown. Second, I operate two businesses within city limits other than my properties, my interests reach beyond my being a landlord. Third, I pay almost $12,000 a year in city property taxes, renting a total of 18 residential units. Fourth, I have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in my properties. Fifth, I am sick and tired of hearing the title landlord used as if it's a four-letter word. We are investors who have decided to invest in Hagerstown. I have invested interest in downtown and want to make sure downtown stays safe, or stays safe, clean, and crime-free, just as you all do. Sixth, this law is like taking a kid into a candy store, finding out that they stole something, and then trying to punish the store owner for not having the candy out of reach. The people committing the problems are the ones who need to be held accountable, not the property owners, who are just trying to provide housing. Seventh, it is my understanding that you did not even seek counsel from landlords or property owners. How can you create a law without seeking help or look, without looking at all aspects of the issue? Eighth, you are trying to fix a problem by punishing the majority of the good landlords for the action of a few bad ones. Less than 1% is my understanding. I believe that most landlords have purchased their properties as investments and want to keep them clean and in good shape and rent it to good tenants. Ninth, if anyone truly believes that there will never be any fees charged, then I believe they are fooling themselves. Even if your intentions now are that there should never be any fees, who's to say the next council will feel the same way? Additionally, fee-free does not rule out the possibility of tax hikes because of the additional burden this will put on the budget. Tenth, a law on this broad could lead to my financial devastation as well as property management companies and other multi-unit owners who will be at a higher risk of problems because they own more properties. Eleventh, I understand that there will be a special review board created, I guess so that if you disagree with having your license revoked, you can appeal it. I also understand that it will only include members of the local government with no private representation. This sounds wrong to me. Eleventh, why do I have to take time out of my schedule for the government to train me on things that I'm already doing? I already have a paragraph in my lease that addresses problem tenants that give me the right to evict them when they're causing problems. Just have a few questions for consideration, why is this ordinance needed? Why are the current laws not good enough? Are landlords supposed to become the police that our tax dollars already pay for? Instead of an eight-hour training, why not create quarterly newsletters with updates and ideas that landlords could use for help? Are we as landlords to create a blacklist of people who landlords won't rent to? If we do, where will these people stay? Currently, if my tenants have issues, I have to tell them to call the police, and I'm now going to have to discourage them from calling the police so that they are not put in jeopardy of losing their place or me my license. Why am I, as a property owner, going to be put in a situation where I could have my license pulled because of the actions of a non-law-abiding citizen? What about some passerby who decides to urinate on my back porch like... What about some passerby who decides to urinate on my back porch, like happened this past summer? I responded by calling the police, and now I'm being told, "Don't call the police because you may lose your license." What about my tenants who awake to some vagrants sleeping on their front porch? Am I to deal with this myself? I did this past summer and was accosted. Ultimately, I called the police, the guy was arrested. We are investors, not fortune tellers. We can tell when...we can't tell when a tenant is going to be a bad tenant. People say do background checks. I've been down this road, and I've found for the most part, most people have a problem that shows up in their past because of a bad decision, but for the most part, are good citizens and are some of my best tenants. On the other hand, I've had tenants that had nothing in their background, who seem to be outstanding people in the community, but start to develop problems. And I was going to give you some examples that I personally have had with some tenants, but I'll try to finish up here. Once we as landlords sign a lease, no matter how bad things get, there is a legal process we have to go through in order to get rid of tenants. And trying to complete this process is...in trying to complete this process, it is at times, it can be very trying on a landlord. It usually happens when the tenant fails to pay rent and want to get upset with the landlord for evicting them. The police may be called several times during this process because the tenant wants to get back at the landlord. You see, if people think that by creating more laws, it is going to change the current problem that we have with crime, they are only fooling themselves. I say this respectfully, but you can sit up there and make all the laws you want, but until we start dealing with the real problem, nothing is going to change.
Five minutes.
Huh?
It's been five minutes.
All right. Can I just tell you what I think you could do?
Sure. And feel free to send whatever you have unsaid in writing.
Yeah, because I have some tenant issues that I dealt with. I have an elderly lady who's called the police and is mentally not there, and, you know, because she calls the police, am I going to lose my license?
I think everybody needs to read the legislation.
All right.
Not the memos that come out from whatever association you belong to.
All right. I don't...I don't belong to any associations.
Qualifying calls, well, you said something in reference to, "We don't care what people outside the city think," and that came from a...
And I said, "I hope that ain't true."
Right, but that came from somebody, so that's the kind of misinformation...
All right, well, here's my idea.
We do need to move on, though. There's a whole list of people signed up to talk...
Why not have the tenants or homeowners who are creating the problems go to an eight-hour training class?
There's a whole list of people signed up to talk...
You said I could finish up.
There is no eight-hour training class. I don't know where that came from. It doesn't exist.
I was talking to somebody, and they said that they thought that it'd be a good idea for this class.
Please, read the legislation.
There is a one- or two-hour training class, one time, period, forever.
Mr. David Ryder.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, Mr. Zimmerman. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk to you. My name is David R. Ryder, 13702 Spring Valley Circle. I'll try to read this as fast as I can. I was born and raised and lived in Hagerstown as a resident all my life, up until the last eight years, in which time I moved to the county. I've been a well-respected general contractor in Hagerstown since 1976 with a city contractor's license, number 136, expires 1215...1215. During that period of time, my offices were located at 120 North Jonathan Street since 1979. I've renovated properties 225, 229 North Jonathan, 28 North Locust, 64 West Franklin. Any one of those properties I renovated, I would have lived in myself. During that time, I've built homes and townhomes all over the city of Hagerstown, including 55 homes at Morningside Heights, 250...205 townhomes at North Gate, 99 townhomes at West Irvin, 175 at Summerlin Manor, which I would like to mention is Hagerstown's only gated community, and finished up at Cortland Manor with 135 units until the bubble burst. That's approximately 681 units added to the city tax base over...city tax base in Hagerstown. Quite a large number, and I would like to add that any one of those properties, as I said, I would live in, would have lived in, including 225 North Jonathan Street. I currently own rental properties in all quadrants of the city of Hagerstown. The South End, Marion and Armstrong Street, Summit Avenue, the East End, Morningside Heights, the West End, Nottingham, Marshall Street, West Woods Road, and then the North End at West Irvin Heights and North Gate. Let's talk about North Gate in particular. In the past, when the city wanted to promote their bond rating, you would bring the representatives over to North Gate and show them a premier community in order to up your bond ratings. Now, after 23 years at North Gate, our community continues to degrade, at least in the eyes of the State Department of Assessments, which I just received last week, where assessments are down 5% to 10%. Even with the falling numbers, North Gate homeowners still pay over $300,000 in city taxes. Now let me add that the unanimous decision of the Board of Directors of North Gate, which include Ann Holzman, mother of the current police chief, former board member Ann Holzman, and Bill Klausert, site manager, unanimously agreed to call for added police protection at North Gate. And since 2008, North Gate Homeowners Association has paid the city of Hagerstown $72,000 for additional police protection at North Gate. Do you pay for police presence on Oak Hill Avenue, East Magnolia, Cortland Apartments, Nolan Village? Why do North Gate residents have to pay for added police protection? And on the downtown, we finally moved our business out of downtown because, one, our employees didn't feel safe; two, our customers, when I told them to come visit me at 7:00 at night at 120 North Jonathan Street, had no parts of coming to 120 North Jonathan. And after 40 years of having my post office box down on 44 West Franklin Street, I've just, in the last month, had to move it to the North End because I no longer have access to the post office at my own free will because of the conditions of downtown Hagerstown on West Franklin Street. We presently pay $50 right now to have the privilege to rent property in the city of Hagerstown, and now you want the landlord to be the police of the property. What authority do I have with an unlawful tenant? Do the unpopular duty that you were elected to do and raise taxes, just a few pennies, and put more police on the street. You may not get reelected, but you might do the right thing and make Hagerstown a safer place to live. Put more police on the street, pay them what they deserve, instead of asking the landlord to become the police. It's totally out of line. Maybe I could have went to the folks on Hamilton Boulevard that were generating meth and told them that, "Hey, guys, stop top...stop generating meth. I'm not the police. I am not the police."
Thank you. All right, next up on the list is Rick Monach...Monas...Monarch, sorry.
The first two people said basically what I was going to say.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Joe Kraft.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Hagerstown, residents of Washington County. My name is Joe Kraft. I live at 18545 Kent Avenue in Hagerstown. For the record, that's part of the...it's not within the city district, but it's part of the 21740 area code. And I guess what happens in Hagerstown also happens within the 2147 area code. So that is why my interest in this meeting tonight and what's going on in Hagerstown. Back in November 2013, the initial discussion centered on crime-free housing in the city of Hagerstown and development of a new ordinance to address the problem. As I stand before you today, the original intended discussion seems to lost some of the underlying agenda, and it's kind of morphed into other areas and other codes and other departments. As stated, the proposal number 2013, to address crime-free housing and associated ordinance to address the problem, based on what is presented to the public tonight, the discussion has morphed into crime-free housing and excessive use of city services. So it's expanded from some of the original intent. The old title, being amended, Chapter 95, excessive use of police services, which centered on Hagerstown Police Department and crime. As presented tonight, the new Chapter 95 has removed the Hagerstown Police Department totally from the name and is currently titled, excessive use of city services, to include the code administration, not sure the connection there. The new title, Chapter 95, excessive use of city services, identifying call...identifies qualifying calls as violation of the following code sections, would be counted as qualifying cause disturbances initially centered on controlled dangerous substance or park in area possession or sale, disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace, liquor law violations, public consumption or open container of alcohol, loud noise complaints, loitering, prostitution, public urination or indecent exposure, undesirables, intoxicated or suspicious persons, any contact which...any conduct which constitutes a felony under Maryland law. Now, under the new proposal, there's language in there now which includes nuisance abatement code violation, weeds, trash, debris, Title 185. Weed control violations, 304.2, sanitary code violation...
Can I just interrupt and ask you if you were here for the discussions that took place in the work session?
No, sir, I wasn't.
Okay. The only reason I interrupt you is because that was brought up by a number of us who have significant concerns about that.
Okay.
And just so you understand that, because that was discussed, and so you understand, just to get you up to date, and Mayor, please don't use his time for my comments. Tonight is going to be a vote to introduce this ordinance. Just so we understand the procedure, it does not become an ordinance tonight if it is voted, okay? By law, the ordinance has to be introduced at one voting session and then passed at the next voting session. The ordinance may be amended between the time it is offered in tonight, between now and then. I only tell you that so you understand, the ordinance as written right now, and I have said it tonight at the work session, and others I think may agree with me, I would not vote for. I will vote to introduce it tonight. Vote to introduce it tonight, but I would not vote for the ordinance as written, and we are going to specifically have additional work sessions to discuss this very issue that you've brought up, which extends this ordinance beyond crime into weeds, rubbish. This council is very aware of that. It has not been actively discussed before tonight, and it will be actively discussed between now and the next voting session. Just want to make sure you're aware of that, because a lot of us hadn't seen this wording before tonight. So, again, I repeat, I wouldn't vote for it as written. I do not think it will end up being as written on those issues.
Councilman, sir, I thank you for that. So, I wasn't aware of that, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight...
Understand that. That's why I wanted to let you know that.
...as everyone else does, to kind of let you be aware of our concerns in the current language of this ordinance. So if that, if I make it...appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Okay, so, all right, then explain to the public, which you've kind of already...I get the intent now, explain to the public how the qualifying cause listed, i.e., weeds, sanitation, trash, which are in another part of a code, and fit the initial intent of crime, crime as controlled drugs, drug-related crime, prostitution, alcohol. There's a difference in that crime, I'm thinking. That's me, though. So as pointed out, and the above include a nuisance abatement code, 185-4 prohibitions. So what ordinance code is this part of? Are the fines of $500 as pointed out in 185-4? Are we going to get those fines relating to weeds, trash? Are they going to be part of fines of $500 as pointed out in 185-4? Chapter 95-4, there's a 100, 250, 500, depending on the offense? Or is another, Chapter 197, $500 to 1,000? So I haven't done the math, but right there for one violation, we could be paying up to $2,000 in potential fines. The way, again, okay, you're shaking your head, no. But it's in parts of different...it's in all those different ordinances and chapters. You see where I'm going with this? So which one applies, I guess is my concern. Okay, so I'll move on. Chronic nuisance list, it appears that such a list already is being compiled relating to the chronic nuisance. That's in 95.4, unless it's changed somewhat from the version I had.
The change there is that that list will be published annually. That's the only change in that section.
Well, I meant, it was 95.4 in that current title, because there's probably been some adjustments to that title, that's all. So, it appears that there is a list being compiled already. The Hagerstown Police Department Crime Analysis Lab had a list of qualifying calls.
See, that law already exists. That's the other thing that people don't understand. This law, the nuisance law, has been on the books in this community for years. So that law is not a new law.
Correct. I'm aware of that. Thank you. Thank you. So, you have the...
I do need to ask you rapidly, because five minutes has elapsed, but go ahead and finish your point.
Okay, well, the five minutes has elapsed. I'll cut right to the chase then and give you my quick...in summary, Chapter 95 should remain as excessive use of police services, not of city services, focus on crime, remove all reference to code administration, weeds, trash, rubbish, verbiage, not the same type of crime. Crime language currently in Chapter 197 should be stricken from 197, i.e. 197-7 Training through 197-10 Loss of Certification, which deals with rental property management, that's 197, and incorporate that into Chapter 95, which seems to be a better fit relating to the Hagerstown Police Department and crime. Once the number of qualifying calls are met, three or four, then, then, obviously, the landlord has proven they are not a good landlord because they had the qualifying calls, then incorporate the verbiage you have in 197-7 through 197-10 Training through Loss of Certification. Thank you.
I encourage you to submit your comments in writing so that we all have time to look at them and digest them. Anyone?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tom Bartles?
Mm-hmm.
Bartles. Come on up, Tom.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Bartles, 50 North Berhans Boulevard. Come before you in reference to the Police Union Local 3373. First, on behalf of 3373, I'd like to thank the Mayor and Council for the three-month extension to our contract. That was much appreciated. We met with the city negotiating team in early December, and through that process, we were able to come up with a proposal to submit to the Mayor and Council. We're now one month into our extension, from which the Mayor and Council gave us, we only have two months left. We're hoping with our proposal we presented to the city negotiating team, and they presented to you, we're going to be able to resolve our contract with you all. We appreciate the Mayor and Council's professionalism. You guys have exhibited towards us throughout this process. The Police Department hopefully can move forward... The Police Department hopefully can move forward with the city in a timely fashion so we can resolve our contract. And again, the Police Department thanks you for your service, and we remain committed to serve the city as we always have and always will. Thank you.
Appreciate your service. Next is Nancy Allen.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, and all the residents who've come here tonight. I'm here this evening to represent the Penmar Association of Realtors. As a professional organization comprised of realtors, appraisers, mortgage bankers, surveyors, and other leaders in the industry, we are opposed to proposed changes in the rental code ordinance. We feel this proposal will serve to infringe on the property rights of those property owners within the city limits. In addition, the ordinance will serve as a disincentive to purchase real estate within the city limits through added regulation and increase in property taxes. The increased regulation will result in a reduction of property values due to a reduced number of families choosing to purchase within the city limits. Demand will decrease over supply. Currently, the taxes are higher within the city limits, which is a negative factor when families are considering a home. This additional regulation will be seen as another negative factor to purchasing a home within the city limits. We need to incentivize residing within the city limits and create demand over supply. We need to work together to achieve the common goal of crime reduction, and would welcome the opportunity to offer suggestions to the city council on that regard. We feel that we can effectively achieve the outcome through other means without further restricting property owners. The Penmar Association of Realtors would like to arrange a meeting this week to present alternate solutions that we feel can be successful. The community is looking for a solution, and we are extending an invitation to the city council using our professional services. We have a commitment to real estate, and the quality of strong communities cannot be understated. We are here to offer assistance so together we can successfully build a strong city with safe neighborhoods. I'd like to also speak as a resident, so I'll take off my badge, and speak to you now as a city homeowner and taxpayer. And I'd like to say this to you, we moved to this city over 25 years ago. My husband and I looked around, we chose the city of Hagerstown for many reasons that were discussed tonight, when you were honoring Tom Rifeord, when you were also talking about the 200th anniversary of the city of Hagerstown. These things that we hold dear to us in a community are the reasons why we chose to bring our family here. We were a young family. We came to this neighborhood, we resided at 924 Oak Hill Avenue, and we chose that neighborhood because it afforded a lot of the things that we thought no longer existed in the neighborhood. It was truly Norman Rockwell, complete with neighbors coming out, bringing brownies to welcome the birth of a new child, embracing each other when someone would buy a home, extending the arm, having birthday parties, parades, all the good stuff that we associate with owning a home. But our neighborhood has changed, and we're not happy with that change. And now we communicate with our neighbors over issues such as graffiti on our garages, and whose car was broken into, and what about the police helicopter the other night? These are the things that we're discussing now, and we're not happy about those discussions. We all agree we need to do something. We want our safe community back. We want our children to walk down to Gordon's unattended. We want them to feel safe when they're out playing with neighbors and catching lightning bugs, all that good stuff. That's what we bought into, and that's what we want back. And we're looking to you for the leadership. We're looking to our city council here for that leadership. We are not looking for further restriction on our properties. We are not looking for more rules and regulations. We just want our neighborhood back. And the crime has infested our neighborhood, and we need to do something about it. And I thank you for the opportunity, and I hope that we can come up with a resolution, but we need to be on the same page with this, and we need to not further impede our property values. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. All right. The next person on the list is Alan Johnson. Come on up.
I'm Alan Johnson. I live on Blue Mountain Drive in Morgansville, Maryland, and I'm currently serving as president of Landlords and Property Owners Association of Washington County. And I want to start by saying I totally agree with Karen, what Karen said, and I would like to extend the help of the Landlords Association along with what the Penmar Association is doing. We, as landlords and property owners and citizens of Hagerstown, are concerned about crime in the city, as all of us are. Our association has been working with Officer Gerald Kendall on the Crime Free Program from its beginnings. We helped them to adapt the program to our area. We helped promote the program, encouraged landlords to take the class, and to work towards giving their properties a crime-free designation. Officer Kendall has attended several of our meetings, and we have kept an open dialogue with him concerning the class. This process has been very successful, and we have been making progress. Landlords that have participated in a crime-free class on a volunteer basis have benefited from it. However, now you want to introduce what I call a nasty threatening ordinance that forces 2,100 responsible landlords to take a shortened version of a class that merits a day, or the extended part which I took was three more days. So I can't see that two hours can do justice to this whole program. We strongly oppose this ordinance because there are only 36 properties in the city that have been identified as a problem. We urge you to use your resources to concentrate on the problem properties and reward these responsible landlords for their good work instead of threatening with this ordinance. A friendly and supportive attitude towards the business community would bring about a positive change that we are looking for. And to conclude, I'd like to read a letter that was written by one of our members who unfortunately can't be here tonight because of an illness. Now, I put my glasses on to see this because it's fine print, so, anyway. It says, "I am a landlord with both commercial and residential properties in the city. I do not live in the city, but started buying properties here because Montgomery County became too difficult to operate in while maintaining my properties and giving good value to the tenants and making a profit. I have actively managed my properties and have physically been in the city and visible around on our properties on the average of three to five times a week over the years. It appears with this ordinance, the city council does not care to keep good landlords in the city. I will definitely move my investments elsewhere if the ordinance is passed as proposed. If it truly was a crime-free ordinance, I would be first in line to support it. I took the crime-free course when it first came out and thought it was very worthwhile, but do not feel it should be forced on people. As the city thought of the unintended consequences of this proposed ordinance, property values will decrease. Good landlords will move their operations elsewhere. There are always bad landlords or first-time landlords who will buy the properties. Properties will decay and become less valuable while bringing the values of surrounding properties and values in the city as a whole. You will have properties emptied, and as time goes on, you will have more and more boarded-up properties. This will make Hagerstown an undesirable place for people to live or open to business. You will grow the code compliance office because there will be a greater need for it. Property taxes will increase to pay for all this. There will be many other unintended consequences of this proposed ordinance that will come to light as time passes. I would love to be part of the revitalization of Hagerstown, but passage of this ordinance will force me to look for a more friendly business environment." And this was written by Richard Weller. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan. Next up on the list is John McCalla. John, from New Windsor. My dad taught middle school there for 41 years.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Thank you all for coming out tonight, too. I know you guys are busy people, appreciate you coming out. My name's John McCalla. As the mayor said, I'm from New Windsor, Maryland. I founded a real estate, the Hub City Real Estate Investors Association, I guess about six years ago, and also founded the Martinsburg Real Estate Investors Association. There are about 950 real estate investors that I network with on a very regular basis, and that would be with investors from Washington County in Maryland, Allegheny County, Frederick County in Maryland, in Pennsylvania Franklin County, Jefferson and Berkeley County in West Virginia, as well as Frederick County, Virginia. I would say that if there's anybody that has their finger on the pulse of the temperature of real estate investors in this tri-state area, it would be me. I can tell you with certainty that inside the city limits of Hagerstown is considered to be an unfriendly place to do business, especially for buy-and-hold real estate investors. That is compared to the other counties that surround the area and Washington County. If I've heard it once, I've heard it a million times, that I'll buy in the county, but I won't buy in the city. What city code enforcement could do to improve their image with investors if they wanted to is a discussion for another day, but I can tell you by piling on more ordinances and regulations will not help to improve that image with real estate investors in the tri-state area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Roger Fairborn.
My name is Roger Fairborn. I'm a real estate broker in the city of Hagerstown. I've worked here for 29 years, both as a real estate broker and as a property manager. I've always endeavored to be a good corporate citizen and have been active in many organizations and have worked to make, or worked on countless projects to benefit the citizens of Hagerstown. As a realtor working in Hagerstown, I've watched many efforts on the part of the city of Hagerstown to improve the conditions of our housing stock. Some of these endeavors, like the Home Store, have improved housing conditions and ownership greatly. Now, the point of my discussion is not the Home Store, but to demonstrate that indeed the Home Store was a successful partnership between the city and the business community. That's what's lacking in this ordinance. You've heard today offers from both the Realtors and the Landlords Association. We've asked for a seat at the table. My focus this evening isn't on the Home Store, but is instead on the joint venture. Why is such a successful effort like the Landlords Association not recognized in coming to the table and helping to create an ordinance like this? I've been a property owner in the city of Hagerstown for 10 years. I have enforced crime-free housing with background checks and noise and disturbance clauses in my personal leases for the past eight years. I hold myself to the standard that I will not own or lease any property that I would not take pride in living in myself. Parts of this new ordinance are counterintuitive for a number of reasons, the first being that the basic requirements of this ordinance are already being met by the community and by current ordinances. Why are we being asked to spend our time, money, and effort accomplishing city requirements when we already maintain our properties well? What does the city hope to gain by reinventing this wheel? As Realtors and property managers, we strive to raise the quality of housing stock as we attempt to improve property values. Increased regulations, particularly like this one, will only serve to diminish interest in Hagerstown properties and will further erode property values in the city. Two neighboring communities, Waynesboro and Frederick, have recently tabled efforts at any kind of code compliance. Those markets are seeing a resurgence of interest. Finally, this ordinance as proposed will result in those properties that are in need of better management becoming pariahs of sorts. Would I risk my right to manage my own properties to help improve and clean up an impacted property, where my license specifically is at risk, to work on cleaning up one where there may be continuing problems? After spending nearly 30 years in this business, I'm simply not willing to take that risk. I'd like to take a few minutes and read in some specific comments I have for you in terms of some issues with the ordinance, and I will submit these afterwards. The list of disturbance conduct includes some behaviors that do not seem to be criminal in nature. Example, if the city police get a call regarding a suspicious person, a noisy person, an undesirable person, how is undesirable or suspicious enforceable? If they are going to enact this, the disturbance list should be limited to conduct which is criminal in nature. It should require that there is a guilty finding in court after the police call, and it should further require that the landlord-owner had actual notice. This could be shown if there was a previous guilty finding, for example, of drug distribution, and an owner does not attempt to terminate that lease. For landlord to get a tenant out, under the lease provisions, there has to be proof in court of a breach of lease action, or in breach of lease action, that the tenant or someone associated with the tenant committed some violation of law. But for the city, some of the items are civil in nature and not criminal. And they are talking about taking action against a landlord based upon implied consent of the landlord. How does the city prove implied consent to unplanned conduct unless the owner is on the site for the event? Based upon, I mean, based upon a call from a complainant who may or may not be identified? Unless the officer witnesses the disorderly conduct or other objectional action, how does the city know that it even happened? If the owner does witness the conduct, unless the owner, if the officer does witness the conduct, but the owner isn't present, how could the city conclude even implied consent to conduct that, or implied consent to conduct that is not planned? An example of an enforcement problem with this for the city is that practically every domestic disturbance could qualify as a disturbing the peace. But even if an owner was notified that the police were called to a domestic disturbance, or a noise, or a disturbing the peace, the landlord cannot evict the tenants under a breach of lease for that without the guilty finding. This law also targets and risks housing loss for those individuals who legitimately suffer from domestic violence. This usually includes violence against women and children.
Roger, just interrupt. It's specifically exempted. Specifically exempted is domestic violence.
If I might finish with my thought.
Absolutely.
Because a domestic violence call would many times qualify as a disturbance of the peace, disorderly conduct, and perhaps the perpetrator is drunk, has an open beer on the sidewalk, is suspicious and/or undesirable, all of which would qualify as a qualifying call. Perhaps the perpetrator is yelling at the victim, which could create a noise complaint. If owners and landlords are being encouraged to evict any tenant who seeks to utilize police protection for themselves or their children, even when they are being victimized, then the city is targeting those most vulnerable people. When the husband is the perpetrator, the wife cannot call the police if she's afraid of an excessive police call and an action by the landlord, which will not have to be proven in court. Under the way the ordinance is written, the landlord, because of the excessive complaints, may take that individual to task. There is no way the city could exempt domestic violence call, or base calls, because the law is triggered by such vague information to begin with. It would be completely arbitrary for the city to try to decide. Thank you very much, and I will submit my comments.
Thanks, Roger. Next person on the list to speak is Terrence Hooper. Terrence?
Hi, I'm Terry Wigfield, live at 497 and 1/2 Mitchell Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland. I moved here about 12 or 13 years ago. Approximately a year after I got here, I bought a four-unit apartment building. It needed severe renovations. I went down to the, where you pulled the permits, showed them the drawings, what I wanted to do, asked them what I needed to do. They showed me things, this wall has to be a certain thickness, so on and so forth. Fine. Couple of years later, you start this city code, the inspections of the rental properties. I attended a landlord association meeting, and there, there was representative from the code compliance department and a lawyer from the city. the code compliance department and a lawyer from the city. And 20 times at least, these people said, "We will only write up safety things. Safety is the only thing that we're worried about. These are the only things." And based upon that, I supported a thing, but there was a gentleman there that said, "That's what they say now, just wait till a couple of years later." Well, I can tell you multiple stories that I have documented evidence where this law's not being administered uniformly and fairly. For example, I have to go to court on the 30th here because I had a mattress hauled away off my property that you've charged me $685 and already sent it to the tax department thing. I wasn't even given the chance to respond. On top of that, they hauled the mattress away on August the 28th, and I got the letter, the notice on the 31st. When I called down, they said, "That's non-negotiable. We've already paid the contractor. You can argue over the $200, but we've already paid the contractor. We'll see where that goes." But my point is that you all sent a representative to this landlord association meeting, and I'm sure it's in their records, where you stood up there and swore up and down, "These are only going to be safety issues." And from what I can see, you looked me in the eye and directly lied to me. So I'm not going to stay for the latter part of this meeting because I have no respect for your word anymore. Okay? Especially after points like this. I also got a letter from the fire department that as a landlord, I had to put certain smoke detectors down. I went down and attended the two-hour class that they made me attend for, went back and put those smoke detectors out, gave the tenants their pamphlets, went over the rules with them, all this other stuff, they can't take the batteries out, only to have at my next code compliance, the city inspectors made me take those same smoke detectors out and put different ones in. I think this, the fact that we're even here talking about what you're proposing to do, it's just so outrageous. I mean, you know, there's the Constitution. It seems to me this hinges upon my liberty. I can take, I took pictures of five sidewalks that I know are rental properties that have snow on them right now. Some people will get written up. I got wrote up for that, for that mattress that was it there or whatever. It was, said mattress and debris. They don't want to tell you what debris is. There's no picture. I'm a licensed home inspector. It's real easy to pull your phone or your camera out and click the picture. Here's what we're talking about, okay? It didn't say if it's on the north, south, east, or west side of the building. You have no idea what you're even dealing with. That's all I got to say. Again, like I said, I've been through this where you directly lied to me, and, you know, I try to, I tried to do the right thing when I came here. I came down, tried to work with the inspectors. I work with a lot of inspectors across three different states and about eight or nine different counties, and I can tell you that the ones in this county, especially the city, are poorly trained and very, very hard to get along with. That's been my experience. Thank you.
Now we'll do Terrence Hooper. Mr. Hooper?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for coming this evening. I would like to give you a little bit of history about myself, ask for some clarification, and then for some advice. I've been a real estate investor in Hagerstown since 2002. I currently have nine units inside the city. I lived in those units from 2002 until 2006, until we moved out into the county. I take my job as a landlord very seriously. It is a full-time business for me. I do not have other forms of income. I screen my tenants extremely well. I'm very serious about allowing no drugs in my units, no dangerous behaviors in my units. It's very real to me. I've, through experience, found that tenants with those issues tend to destroy my properties, and I like my properties to be nice. So I screen them very, very well. So if I understand the ordinance as it sits today, if one of my properties has three qualifying occurrences, it becomes a chronic nuisance property. Now, if I understand what a rental facility is within these ordinances, it's any rental property less than three units, you know, which would qualify and is a residential property for tenants. So if there are three occurrences on that rental property, which a duplex would qualify as one property, then I'm at risk of having the property declared a chronic nuisance and my license pulled for all nine of my units. So if I have a tenant in one side of the building that has a party, that's a qualifying call. If I have a fight between two of my tenants' guests on the other side of the property, that's a qualifying call. And let's say there's an overly anxious teenager who's fighting with their parents, and they call the police because they don't know how to deal with their son, that's a third call. Now I have a chronic nuisance property, subject to fines and/or the loss of my license for all of my other rental units. As council members and mayor, what do you suggest I do in that situation with my tenants?
Well, I don't think the last call will be a qualifying call. If that's a domestic, that'd be domestic violence if you have an issue with a young person and the parents can't handle it.
It's not, it's not violence.
But honestly, but the point of this is really more for you to hear from, or for us to hear from you than for you to hear from us. I encourage people to stick around for mayor and council comments because I'm sure folks up here will have something to say about this, but we'd really be interested in hearing more from you.
Okay. My fear, given these type of situations, is that the people that are going to be harmed the most by this ordinance are the good tenants that we have in this city. We're talking about tenants who are not necessarily involved in drugs, probably are not, pay their rent on a regular basis, maintain their properties adequately, but yet they may have a noise violation, they may have a fight that occurs, let's say somebody not even related to them has urinated on their property. It may be one or two violations for each tenant, but now we've got a chronic nuisance property, and the city is forcing me either to pay fines or evict one or both of them. That's, Mr. Mettenner is shaking her head.
No, I, that's, you know, that's one of the problems is that's not really what the ordinance says, and that's not the intent of the ordinance.
I mean, I've read through it a couple of times. That's clearly what I see. There's no clarification.
What my understanding is that once you're notified, it's expected that the, there will be a reaction from the landlord in response.
Agreed, and I would send out a letter to my tenants.
And that's a reaction.
Right, and that's a reaction. But there's nothing in the ordinance that says, "As long as I react, I'll not be fined." There's nothing in the ordinance that says, "As long as I react, I will not have my license taken away."
Those things need to be in the ordinance.
Excuse me?
They need to be in the ordinance.
Okay. And I agree. As a, as a side note, the code compliance piece, the code violations piece extrapolates the risk substantially more. You know, if we have one tenant who doesn't shovel their walk and another one who doesn't cut their grass, and then we have a third one who does get into a fight, now we've got our three.
Let me just read 197-9, enforcement of the crime-free provision. It shall be a violation of this chapter for a licensee landlord or designated agent to knowingly permit a tenant, occupant, tenant's guest, or person under the tenant's control to violate the crime-free housing provision of a lease after receiving notice that said location has been deemed a chronic nuisance property pursuant to Chapter 95 of the City Code without taking reasonable steps to enforce, enforce said provision. So that goes back to the idea that you have an opportunity, that it opens a line of communication between the police and you as a property owner. The intent of this is truly to strengthen the hand of landlords because we do know how difficult it can be to evict problem tenants. So the idea is that this does not pose any risk to landlords, excuse me, it does not pose a risk to any property owner except for the possibility of learning something new. I heard folks say that they benefited from taking the seminar, that they learned something from that, and we hope that good property owners will learn something new, and then when they continue being good property owners and landlords, they don't have to take another class, and there are no other fees. So I really don't think that there is a lot to risk, so to speak, except for the risk of learning something new.
And the word eviction is never mentioned in this ordinance because there is no requirement that anybody evict a tenant.
I think then, if, if that is the council stance, that there should be some clarification in the ordinance as to what a response is, what a justified response is at one occurrence, two occurrence, three occurrences, and as well as when we as landlords would get notified in that process. Is it going to be at the first occurrence, the second occurrence, the third occurrence?
Yes, absolutely, every occurrence, every occurrence. If you're not notified, you can't, it's part of this ordinance is a requirement that the city notify the landlord because if the landlord doesn't know what's going on in the property, then he has no ability to do anything about it. And right now, there's no requirement that our police notify a landlord, "We want you to know what happened in your property." I, I understand the mistrust of government, and the flip side is, hopefully you understand there are people actually up here trying to do the right thing and not making this onerous, and that's why we've tried to get this down to, under the argument that good property owners shouldn't be penalized, that if people don't have problems in their property, there's a one, two-hour class, period. I mean, that's it, and I understand, and I have the same concerns you do about loss of licensure, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, I would not vote for the ordinance with these code provisions in it.
I appreciate your, your questions, though. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next is Joan Lord. Joan?
I'm Joan Lord, and I own and live on 711 Salem Avenue. I also own and rent a property on North Mulberry Street, and I own a property management company that manages properties in Hagerstown City. Crime is very important to me in all these different roles. I would love to be notified of anything that's going on at my properties, and especially of convictions, because as an owner and landlord, I cannot evict somebody without a conviction. He says, she says, doesn't do me any good. And as a Realtor for over 25 years, more and more regulations are making it very difficult to sell properties in the city. I represent a lot of investors, and many investors have refused to even look at properties in the city because of the regulations and how difficult it is to, to work with the city and the inspections and the other things that are always happening. With the current regulations now, it seems like, you know, all of a sudden, one year, everybody has to redo their sidewalks. Another year, everybody has to go and add handrails. With more and more regulations, it's just getting more and more difficult to encourage investors and owners to live in the city limits. As a current resident, I want people to own and live here. I've really enjoyed living here. Recent transplant is how I've stated, I've only lived here less than a year now, and I really like it. There's a lot of stuff going on in Hagerstown that I didn't realize until I moved here. But whenever I talk about it, I get so much negativity from other people about all the regulations that it's hard to encourage the people that I'm representing in buying and selling property to buy in Hagerstown. So I'd like for you to consider all of that, and maybe if you take the class, reduce the licensing fees.
There are no fees. There are no fees.
No, the $50 a year registration fee.
For the registration fee.
Right. If you take the class, get a reduction in that, that fee, so more people may be willing to take the class. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Next up is Bob Cody.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, Senator Munson, and all you good folks who have come here because you're pretty concerned about something. I'd like to underscore the comments of Alan Johnson, the president of the Landlords Association, and a number of the speakers that followed him, and with that, I'll expedite this forum by seating myself.
Thank you, Bob.
Here, here.
Next up is Lynn, I think it's a C-U-E-T-O, Quito?
My name is Lynn Quito. I live at 468 North Potomac. I own...
Can you pull the microphone a little closer to you, please?
Is that good? Is that better? Okay. I live at 468 North Potomac Street since 1973. I own properties contiguous to my property, 462, 474 North Potomac, 18 Broadway, and 22 Broadway. So I'm in continuous visual contact with my properties every single day. Since I started in 1973, there've been a tremendous number of regulations on the state level and the city level which have come about, and my concern with this is that it's another layer of regulation. Since I started, and I know you have no control over the state of Maryland, but as required of me as a landlord to work on my property, I have to take an eight-hour training class every two years to maintain my lead paint supervisor's license. That class costs $200. I have to get a license from the state for my supervisor's license. That's $125. I have to register with the state, $30 per unit every single year, and when I have tenant turnover, I have to have my properties led inspected. That's approximately $200 per unit for every turnover. With the city, I have to register each pro, each unit individually, pay $50 per unit. I have an interior inspection when there's tenant turnover. If it occurs after four years, the regulations for that have changed from simply safety issues to vary, it varies every time it happens. Things change constantly. There are exterior inspections every two years. Again, these change all the time. One of my latest inspections, the cover was off an Antietam cable box. That was noted on my inspection, and yet the landlord who lives across the alley, his property is an eyesore, and it's been an eyesore for many years. So I'm just concerned with all the regulations that I comply with now, and I comply with every single one of them. I just hesitate to have another layer of regulation, and that's my major concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Tambra Day.
Thank you for seeing us tonight. I'm currently a landlord with property inside the city limits. We've taken great care of our property to ensure that it is a wonderful residence for our tenants. I've crossed my Ts and dotted my Is when it came to the city's many regulations. As a landlord, I thought the city could actually do something to me if I didn't follow these rules. In addition to being a landlord, I'm a homeowner. I live within the city limits on Oak Hill, and our property has been besieged over the years by rentals that have not been required to toe the same line that I thought was required of me. We had so many concerns that we actually formed a Neighborhoods First Group. Captain Holtzman attended our meeting, and he was our liaison. He informed us that there was an ordinance in the city that if the police received a certain number of calls regarding a property, they could take action. We were thrilled. Action is what we wanted to see. Unfortunately, that was five years ago, and the problem has only escalated. Robberies, car vandalizing, 20 gang signs on private properties, burglaries, break-ins, the list goes on. But the straw that broke the camel's back, I'm sorry, happened on me. ...happened on May 30th, when our house and neighborhood ended up directly under the searchlights of the helicopters involved in trying to catch an armed robber who had run down the alley directly behind my yard to evade police after a drug deal that had gone wrong. The police were concerned enough to bring helicopters. I would classify this as dangerous. And yet, these tenants still stayed there for five more months. Where was the eviction? Where was the property seizure? Where was the enforcement under the current regulations? These tenants are finally out now, but only after another alarming incident, which you might have read about in the January 1 paper. It involved the Washington County Narcotics Force showing up in armored vehicles, seizing approximately 50,000 in heroin and meth, two stolen handguns, rifles and shotguns. According to Lieutenant Todd Kearns, and I quote, "That's a lot of drugs." I think we surpassed nuisance. You know, the irony is our family and our neighbors had their rights as taxpaying homeowners completely trampled upon by landlords who had long ago figured out that except for letters, occasional visits from the city, idle threats, and some fines, the city had no real power to enforce their ordinances. These landlords complete minimal repairs, rent out units before they are inspected, allow dangerous and potentially hazardous situations in and around their properties, and smile as they take their checks to the bank. There are 2,100 landlords or so in the city with thousands of units. And a small handful of these landlords are the major problem. The remainder keep toeing the line, trying to keep up with the myriad of current regulations. These few are causing the remainder of us to incur more regulations, more time, more money, and for what? So they can ignore yet another law. Now that I know that the serious and dangerous situation behind our house will probably never be resolved under the current mandates or any new ordinances, I'm asking you to reconsider adding this new ordinance and instead, please enforce the laws that already exist on the books to make Hagerstown the safe place that it can be. Thank you.
Thanks, Tamara.
Oh, I would like to make one more comment, too. Because I've had my unit for, I think, nine years now. I had the same tenant for eight years. And I would like to confirm that I do also feel two things. One, when they come through every time... Now, this is over eight years. They have new things that they require of you each time they come into a unit. And secondly, because I know what my unit looks like, and it's pristine, and I know what I've lived behind for years, I think there just needs to be way more across-the-board evenness on this issue. Thank you.
I would just want to say that the Chapter 95, I think it is, that we're updating, would address exactly what you're saying, which is that the current ordinance doesn't have enough teeth at the current 10 qualifying calls per calendar year. So to reduce that, we really do think that it will put more heat on those problem property owners.
I'm afraid as a landlord, I feel like all that's going to happen is that those of us who do what we're supposed to, which I'm assuming is most of us in this room, we're just going to keep jumping through hoops. And I'm still going to live behind a total unsafe disaster. It's totally a disaster behind my house. You know.
Now, I know exactly who you're talking about. I had a few words with him after the last meeting that we had.
Except that nothing has been done. Why has nothing been done about this property? He pays his fines, he does his thing. He tramples on the historic district when the rest of us have to come to historic meetings and jump through hoops for that stuff, too. And then he goes and does whatever he wants on his property. Why do I want another ordinance that I have to jump through when what's currently on the books is not being enforced? I don't know if it's not because it's not doable or allowed. I'm not sure what the problem is.
The current ordinance wouldn't have required him to do anything at the current time under what you're describing.
What? I'm sorry.
The current ordinance would not...
Of course it would. He has had many, many violations. This place is a disaster. I'm not sure how the next tenant is allowed to move in. Why am I told if I had two little things wrong on my... The exhaust fan rattled. Okay. That my tenant can't move in. Could not move in. They strong-armed me and said that my tenant could not move in. And Mr. Listishen looked up my record and said, "Well, that was because of the smoke detector." And interestingly enough, eight years ago, when I had the first inspection, we had a smoke detector in the house. But the one downstairs was never mentioned.
Well, thank you, Tamara.
And now, all of a sudden, I needed a second one. And I was told the tenant couldn't move in the next day because of that.
Well, I do think we all share your concerns for the quality of the landlords, especially in our neighborhood, as you know. And thank you for your comments.
And I'd like to say, I moved into this neighborhood. I live a block from Nancy. And all the reasons that we are. But I am nervous about letting my teenagers walk our dog when we have this kind of violence. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. My name is James Stone, and I live in the city. I own, not residential rental property, but I do own commercial rental property. I vote. And my career, most of my professional life, has been tied to the downtown community. I care about this city. In my opinion, some of the comments that I've heard mentioned about how Mr. Metzner said that there are things in this current draft that you would not support, you would not pass in that form. I would respectfully say that this is not an ordinance that can be fixed by redrafting. It is fundamentally flawed. The reason it is fundamentally flawed is because in final analysis, what it seeks to do is impose responsibility on property owners and landlords for the conduct of third parties. In most cases, landlords are not in a position, as a practical matter, to do that. The third parties may or may not be tenants. In the block in which I work downtown, we have had a number of incidents, ranging from literally a riot a couple of months ago that brought, I don't know, 100 people out on the streets, to a dead body between the building that I work in and the next building, blood on the sidewalk of the office building in which I work, shootings, and so on. I understand. I understand that the crime is a serious problem. And I understand that things need to be done. We have a police department. Frankly, I think we have a good one. If we don't have enough resources to properly enforce the laws that are now on the books, then we need to do what's necessary to add to those, even if that means spending more money. What's not fair, what violates every principle that I've ever learned about fundamental fairness, responsibility of citizens, is you don't make... I mean, I may be responsible for what I do. But I'm not responsible for what somebody else does. If somebody comes by my rental property and urinates in the street, if somebody who is in my apartment gets into a fight, whatever those things may be, that's not something I control. Unless, of course, you want me to become a vigilante. And I don't think you want that. I don't think that's a good idea for citizens. That's why we have police force. So at bottom, this ordinance seeks to do that which is just fundamentally unfair, if not unconstitutional. And that is, it asks us to control the behavior of other people which we cannot, as a practical matter, control. Now, beyond that, I agree with the comments that have been made, that this ordinance is duplicative. And we already have ordinances on the books that would address the myriad problems that we have with a few of the many landlords. I don't know why we have those problems and why they're not being fixed. But if the ordinances that we now have don't do the job, another one like this isn't going to do any better. Let me ask you, the owners of the building on Antietam Street, which you all know had the person that lived in it and started the fire and it burned down.
He didn't live in it. It was an empty, vacant building.
It was an...
A vacant building.
It was a building in which a street person of some kind lived in a bathtub in that building. At least, that's what the paper said.
Vacant building in which he was living there illegally.
That's what I said. Okay? Now, my question... My point to you is, is that the people that own that building, they're not susceptible to the laws that we have. There's nothing you can do, really, as a practical matter, other than condemn the building. This ordinance that you propose is not going to have one more effect on them. Now, what it will do, as you've heard again and again, is make life miserable for good and responsible owners and landlords who want to do the right thing, who want to obey the law, and are already carrying the burden of too much regulation. Now, I've heard some people say that, "Well, you know, we've got this crime. We've got these problems in the downtown area. We've got to do something. We just have to do something. And maybe this isn't a perfect ordinance, but it's better than nothing." I beg to disagree. The fundamental principle, at least that Doc was bound by, is the principle that whatever you do, first, do no harm. All this ordinance is going to do is make it harder for responsible owners, responsible landlords, to operate. And it's going to make them less willing to operate and do business in this city. Even if you don't care about the non-resident landlords, you ought to care about the people that live in this city that are citizens. Because ultimately, they are the ones whose quality of available housing is going to decline because good people are driven out. This ordinance should not be introduced. It should never see the light of day. Thank you.
Next on the list is Nate Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm glad I'm not in your seat tonight. I want to throw a little ice on the hot seat and just thank you for reviewing the noise ordinance. And as we see it, my counsel and I, the way it's written now, it's acceptable. We believe it meets the constitutional muster. And so I strongly suggest you vote on it as it is. If there are any other changes outside of what you've done already for the fireworks and things like that, then we'll probably review that and look at the constitutionality. But as far as the way it sets right now, we want to thank you for the time to look at it again and get into it and hear our voice. And that's what the Constitution provides, is free speech, as many of the citizens here are voicing their opinion. And so I just want to thank you so much for the time taken that. And we do approve of it as it stands right now. Thank you.
Thanks. Last but not least, for the citizen comment portion, is Michael Stanford. That's the only one I have. Oh, that's for the hearing, right? No? Oh, okay, never mind. Sorry you're not last, Michael.
That's okay. Michael Stanford.
Sorry you're not last.
Yeah. Sorry, or last, which one? Okay, thank you. I do have a document here, and I'm going to put that in for... I will give a copy to Don and just put it into the record then. But this is... He was not able to be in attendance today. But this is from Travis Poole, who's an attorney in town, who lives in town. So since we've been long-going, I won't read these three pages. And we'll just make a couple of quick comments. Councilman Metzner, you make the comment about one to two hours. That has not been designated. That's part of the issue with this whole ordinance. These issues... There are so many unstated things within this ordinance. If we read the ordinance as it's written, it gives a lot of capacity to people to do what they choose to do. Currently, the course is, I want to say, eight hours for the small one. You know, I don't think anyone in this room here disagrees with the voluntary program that we have. Everybody in this room, you know, agrees that we need to do something with crime. There's not an issue that you're lowering the calls. But what... How you're doing the calls and what kind of calls, the code enforcement piece that got put in there, that is an issue. Mayor, I noticed you seemed concerned about a comment made earlier about, you know, the board and being able to appeal to those who are actually... And that's what the code actually states, is that if you are deemed a nuisance property, you can appeal that. And the representatives are from the city police, housing, or Code, and there was one other city organization. So you're appealing to those who cited you. So that's... So there's a lot in this ordinance that are a problem. I agree and grant that lowering the number of calls may help for some of them. The big issue, less than eight tenths of a percent of rental properties fall under what this code is looking to deal with in the whole city. So we're going through all this time and trouble for eight tenths of a percent.
One class, right?
One class. Councilman Metzner, what's your time worth?
No, 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 I just want to make sure...
What's the paperwork to manage?
I just want to make sure that when we talk about all the time and effort, that you're right. And you know, Mike, I'm going to work with you and try to resolve the questions you're raising.
What was for... When Code started in 2003 for the rental registration, what was a rental unit cost?
I don't know.
$18? Code rental unit?
It was $39.
No, when it first started. All right. You jumped. Okay, it was $39. Now, we're at $50. So there's no cost. There's paperwork to send out, there's mailings, there's all these things. So there is a cost to the city to do this. And I understand Chief Holtzman's thought that, you know, that he'll be able to free up officers to go other places. I don't know if I agree with that concept. Because, again, we're talking about 29 properties, according to their numbers, for 2013. Because there was 36 total properties. 20% of those were residential, the other 80% were... So if my math is right, that's 29 properties. So the intent is great. The structure doesn't bode well. And it's been bandied around many times over the years that, you know, I'm not a resident of the city. And it's been bandied around many times by council folks, and I'm no individual ones, that it's residents is who you work for, not, you know, taxpayers. And that's fine. But, you know, this is the one thing I noticed tonight. There are a lot of residents here tonight. City residents that disagree with what's going on. Now, some of them aren't speaking because they... Whether they don't like to speak, they're concerned, but they're here to show support. And to have this many people turn out to say that they don't think this is correct, and then we're going to go ahead and induce the ordinance, even though we're not sure that it's correct as it is. So thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thanks, Mike. The clerk has corrected me, and we do have a few more people. The next person on the list is Anthony Britty?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Thank you. And Nancy, you signed up again. Did you want to speak again? No.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. Now, I'm not Ron Nash, because Mr. Nash unfortunately has flu and was not able to stay here and attend. So he gave a spot to me to just make a couple of comments. So hopefully, that's okay, and you'll just bear with me for a minute. I'm glad to see so many people out here showing how they feel about the entire...
Excuse me, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Oh, I am Bill Wilds.
Thanks.
And I live off of Sheridan Avenue in Hagerstown. And my wife and I own a property down on North Potomac. And again, I want to thank everybody for attending. I think it's important. I think I know, you know, that issue is important. And I'm glad to see all the support for everybody that needs this. I'm going to make it brief. I really, I've looked over all of the, you know, all of the paperwork... I really, I've looked over all of the, you know, all of the paperwork, everything that's been put out, everything online, offline, whatever. Not to add to everybody else's stuff, I haven't seen anything in the ordinance, or any mentioning in the ordinance, about where does the Hagerstown Housing Authority stand in the middle of all this? Now, and I'm not talking about an enforcement or whatever, but if you have a Section 8 housing, how easy is it going to be for someone like myself to be able to evict a tenant who I don't have a lease with? I have a lease with Hagerstown Housing Authority. And somehow, that smells like that's going to be a problem for me unless they're included in this process. You don't have to comment now, I know you covered it later, but I have not seen in the ordinance anywhere where they have a liability in all of this, where they have a responsibility in all of this, and how they will work with those homeowners and landlords that they now turn people through for rentals, and what their responsibility will be. And again, I've read it all, and it's not in there. So I appreciate your time. I thank you very much, and hopefully this is something we'll here discuss later or another time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. The next person is Stephen Rain. Stephen?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Hello. I live on Seven West Servin Avenue, Hagerstown, Ireland. I'm just a concerned citizen. I do not own any properties, other than my home here on the north end. I see a couple potential unintended consequences to what's going on. Once, one is what's already been addressed, is that you're putting additional burdens on people that are interested in improving the properties in Hagerstown. And I see that as adding to the cost, and the owner, the, just, I don't know how to say it nicely, but just the bull crap to what guy, somebody has to do, go through to rent properties here. I have several friends who rent properties. I think you're going to drive a lot of the small people out, and you're just going to end up with just a few really big people in the business. I don't think that's good for, for the city. I think that some of the, probably the ones that are giving you problems are some of the bigger companies. The other thing is, if you do what you want to do, you're going to make it so that these people have to evict more people, and that hurts poor people. And what about the litigation, potential litigation, that these folks are going to have to face when they're starting throwing people out for things where that nobody was even convicted of anything of? All right, you're, you're, you could potentially put them at risk for being sued. And I think the last thing is, you're going to increase the cost of housing in Hagerstown, and that affects a lot of poor folks. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stephen. That concludes citizen comments. The, I would encourage anyone who feels like they have more to say to correspond to us directly, or get something in writing to the city clerk. At this point, we will close citizen comments and go into the public hearing for the water and wastewater five-year rate plan. Staff is going to come forward, make a statement, and then we'll... Do we have anybody signed up for the public hearing?
No. No. So at 8:40 PM, I would open the public hearing for water and wastewater rates and charges proposed for fiscal year 15 through and including fiscal year 19. Public hearing notice was published in the Herald Mail on Monday, January 13th. I ask for any speakers to please state their name and address for the record. We have no one signed up to speak, so I open the podium to anyone that's in the audience or in attendance. Seeing none, I would conclude this public hearing. The record will remain open for ten days for comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to point out that there's a very interesting summary of what the rates would do to an average bill on the back of the materials that were put in the record. Mike, did you put this in the, in the record?
Yes, sir.
You're right, okay. And if people, if people want information, I'm sure it's available from the city city clerk's office. It really clarifies a lot of what we've done in our work sessions and what's happening with the rates.
Maybe we should. Mike, did you mention how we advertised the hearing, just so it's in the record?
Yeah, I think you mentioned that in your statement, right?
Yeah, I think you said it at the beginning. Yes, sir, I did. We, we published the notice on Monday, January 13th, in the Herald Mail. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks. City administrators' comments?
None from me this evening.
Moving on to mayor and council comments, we'll start to my right with Mr. Alshire, and we'll work our way down.
All right. I have a couple of comments. I will start with the easy ones first. We attended, a couple of us attended the chamber mixer this morning for a tour of the Board of Education offices proposed for the old Potomac Edison Building. There were quite a number of folks there. Also attended a meeting of the municipal league chapter last evening, and attended a coalition meeting, was that last week, Marty?
Yeah, last Thursday.
Yeah. To iron out our final itinerary for the things we're going to take down to the, to the Capitol for, for our legislative items Thursday. And also attended the service award luncheon today, and, you know, would mention, you know, we had a couple of employees, one of which at least had forty years of service, which, you know, was interesting to hear that, and to hear that he was out on a, several calls last night, I think three water line breaks. I do those myself in my line of work outside of this, and so I definitely appreciate, you know, the work that goes into when they occur. The next is, I would like to respond to at least some of the folks that made some comments this evening, and that, that remain. And while I, you know, I can't do it in some comprehensive fashion, I just wanted to hit a couple of the highlights. And the first is this, as some of you folks may know, I like to try and keep pretty good records of my activities, and I would like to dispel this notion of this not caring about non-city residents. There were thirty responses sent to me via email, thirty, from twenty different people, and I guarantee if you talk to those twenty people that sent emails, they will tell you that I'm probably the only council member, because I'm active with email, that responded to all twenty of them in each occasion that they sent me an email, and engaged them in the thoughts and discussion they wished to bring forward. One of which, I'd like to just read briefly to Mr. Johnson, the president of the Landlords' Association. I don't know if you're still here in the audience, but this notion that we haven't reached out, that we haven't offered a seat at the table. This is my email from November 19th in response to his email to me November 17th. Thank you for your correspondence. I understand your position on this issue, and similar to the reaction to implementation of the rental registration, to address various levels of degradation of rental housing stock within the city. I had some thought that the Landlords' Association would be opposed to this ordinance and the associated program as well. I would offer that in consideration of the passage of this ordinance, I would be more than willing to meet with members of your association at your convenience to discuss concerns and identify reasonable resolutions. I didn't get a response to that email, just like I didn't get a response to about eh, fifteen out of the twenty that I sent out. But in each one of those responses to folks, I clearly extended that offer to discuss at any convenience they would like to. So clearly, from this council member has not been an issue of not offering a seat at the table for that type of discussion to occur, and that was two months ago in which that offer was made. The next notion is in relation to some of the comments that are associated with a piece of correspondence that went out sometime this week, such as the issue of not caring of, about non-residential or, or non-residents, or that we salt no word with landlords, or that there's a fee associated with this, which you've clearly heard there's not. Or the implementation of this review board. That's not new. That exists in the current ordinance that has been in place on the books for years. Or this eight-hour training, which again, is not true. I had numerous correspondence with Mr. Kraft, who made very valid points this evening, and he'll attest I sent, I think, five emails back and forth with him, and have clearly been engaged in conversation. I definitely extend that offer from this side of the table. There was also a comment made by Mr. Fairborn, that the ordinance is unnecessary and redundant because all the properties are well-maintained. We wouldn't be sitting here having this discussion if that were the case. We just simply would not. I wanted to thank Mr. Hooper for his comments this evening. I thought that that was exactly the type of dialogue and discussion that needs to be had. I especially liked his point on the statement of protection when a reasonable act is taken. I take a good point with that, and I think it's a valid point to, to include. And I'd also like to address Mr. Stone's comment about the fundamental unfairness. And the reason stated for being fundamentally unfair is that he has no responsibility, no responsibility, that was the word, for tenants' actions. And that our expectation is that we expect him to control his tenants. That's not what this ordinance says. What this ordinance says is that you take appropriate action as the landlord after an incident occurs for the actions of that tenant. It doesn't say control that tenant from day one, it just says, "Take reasonable steps to address that once an action occurs and you've been made aware of it." And there's a number of other points with that, and I'm not going to belabor the meeting looking through those. Because what I do want to address is a second and last issue, and that is the editorial that was written this past weekend, and I know the mayor keeps telling me to stop reading the paper, and I just can't, can't help myself, I guess. But what it does is it chastised, for lack of a better word, folks like myself for inquiring, contesting the process in which we have selected our urban redevelopment committee. And it does so under the guise that we have fumbled and bumbled along, and that we shouldn't do that, that we should sit up here and at our convenience, we should ignore the process when it deals with things like downtown development plans, that we should ignore the process if it means red tape in part of the way, that we should ignore the process simply because there are moments we may not be happy with some action that occurs. And we should ignore the process when the process encourages a policy that is friendly to the self-interests of the business that would gain from it. And it would forgive us, it would forgive us some tinkering under the hood of this particular group, as long as we simply ignore the process. They're right, that that would be convenient. The problem is this, these members up here, citizens of the city, we took an oath, and what the Herald Mail asks us to do is ignore that oath that we took. They ask us to take this charter, and from inconvenience of Charter Section 1204 and 304, we tear it up because it's inconvenient. That charter creates this body. They ask us to take the sections of the code and Article 10, and they ask us to tear it up because it's inconvenient to the process. And they ask us to take our ethics ordinance, which we adopted less than a year ago, and tear it up because it's inconvenient. I didn't take an oath to that effect. And I look forward to handing the Herald Mail the opinion of our attorney in response to that editorial that was written in the anonymity that they refuse in that hypocrisy to allow the citizens in mail call to no longer do. If they're going to write this garbage, then they need to put their name to it.
Mr. Brubaker?
Well, I don't know where to start. Well, I won't start by going over a speaker-by-speaker thing. I thank you for presenting your views. I asked for views at the beginning of this process, if you might remember back all those months ago. But I would wager that if you went back to the rental licensing hearings, you would hear many of the same general assertions about what would happen. I would wager if somebody went way back when housing codes were introduced, you'd have the same thing. Now, that's, in that argument, it's, it's not, it doesn't prove anything, and I am listening to what you say. But I have homeowners, I have a letter from homeowners saying, "Please do something to address problems with rental properties," and it's not working. Now, you all say that it's a failure of enforcement. Perhaps it is. I've talked to staff over and over again, and there's usually been some reason. And usually, there's loopholes in the law, and yet when we try to fix laws, whoop, that's tightening the noose too tight, we're getting the, the good guys. Well, to get the bad guys, sometimes we have to do something when we've worked very hard to put very minimal requirements on you all. And as Mr. Alshire indicated, it requires you to try to deal with the problem. It doesn't require you to do particular things. It requires you to try to work to resolve the problems created by a tenant that's committing crimes. But I do listen, I, I get all those emails that, that Christian referred to, and, but at the same time, there are other people I get letters from and emails from. So it's, although there's a lot of people in the room tonight on this subject, on one side of it, there's another side as well. People that are investing in homeownership, and I know some of you are homeowners, I understand that, but I think they feel pretty strongly that this goes in the right direction. So we try to find a reasonable middle ground here. Now, I want to address what Mr. Alshire just said, because I guess, if he's inferring that there's council members up here ripping up the charter and the code, he's, he's, he's wrong. We're trying to do our jobs, we're trying to do them in the best way we see fit. Again, I remind you all, there aren't easy answers. And the problem I had with the newspaper editorial is, it, it treated Mr. Alshire's position as that of the whole council, when there has never been any indication that's the position of the whole council, none whatsoever. In fact, there's been a majority of this council, in fact, a unanimous council voted for this project and this process, and there's been a majority in favor of, of proceeding. And I think there's a majority that feels we're not violating any ethical or any sections of the city code, regardless of whatever advice Mr. Alshire is receiving. So I resent the implication that there's four, three, four, whatever you want to say, other people that are, that are somehow violating and don't care about city codes or regulations. That's not the case, you know it's not the case. And what I am concerned with is moving forward, moving, you know, the council has taken a lot of criticism for not investing over a million dollars in soft planning, once again, for our downtown. in soft planning, once again, for our downtown, and instead, taking a state grant and turning it into investing, a vehicle to find investment, market opportunities, marketing our downtown, practical, down-to-earth. Now, who knows if it's going to work? But we're in there trying hard. But I guarantee you, we're trying to do it the best way we can, and we're trying to do it in a way that works and we're not violating ethical standards. I would match the ethical standards of the folks up here with anybody else's ethical standards up here, and I resent that implication. And I went to a lot of meetings last week also.
Mr. Metzner.
Thank you. I'd like to address two issues if I could, and I'm going to try to be brief because it's already a long night. One is the issue of the qualifying offenses. There has been a lot of discussion and fear tonight of, "Look what you're going to do to us on these qualifying offenses." We're afraid of the future. Folks, how many of you have had a qualifying offense in this room that you think was inappropriate? Because the qualifying offense definition in laws have been in effect for homeowners? The nuisance code for years, right?
For years.
For years? Hmm? I'm saying, who's received that they think are unreasonable?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I have two.
And go into great detail.
Okay.
Anytime.
Okay. But so the fact is, the nuisance law has been on the books for many years, and if you've never received a notice of a nuisance call, you have an idea of what you're not dealing with and what you're not going to have to deal with. And the biggest things that have been done in this law is the law that was standing has been reduced from 10 calls to three or one felony call. But otherwise, essentially, definitions are the same. There's nothing new there. Now, I had had a lot of contact from landlords, and the one thing that I've overwhelmingly heard is you shouldn't penalize the people that aren't causing problems. I've heard that over and over. I personally have done everything in my power so far to try to achieve that goal, in so much as, right now, I believe the only thing that this law does, one, it mandates a written lease; two, it mandates this training session. We'll have discussions about that in the future. But other than that, I know of nothing else that this law mandates that any landlords do. And we've changed the law so that after you take the initial course, which we have been told is anticipated at two hours, so we're going to have to respond to what you've said. I've heard tonight that there are people who've taken the equivalent of this class. I don't see any reason someone can show that they, through certifications, have had the same stuff that they would have to go through it again. And we've changed the law based upon concern so that if you don't get to be a nuisance person after the first class, you never have to take it again. So just let's make sure, there's no fees associated with this. There is a written lease requirement. There is the one-class requirement. Other than that, I am not aware of any other things that this law mandates that one does other than take appropriate actions, and I think we, again, got good feedback tonight that people were afraid of what's the definition of appropriate actions. I think we have to help define that. What is not ever mentioned in this ordinance, ever, is the word eviction, because it doesn't require anybody to be evicted. It doesn't require anybody to start eviction actions. It is not meant to make people's lives miserable or to kick people out of housing. It's meant so that if people, landlords like the one that we've heard on Hamilton Boulevard, who comes in here and complains to us all the time, now has three qualifying calls and doesn't do anything about it, then his license can be taken, and he can be denied the right to lease again. That's what this is about. It's about notifying landlords that there's a problem and helping them solve the problem. It does not require eviction. We've already had discussions and work sessions about the type of things that we would be looking for. We are not holding landlords responsible. The qualifying calls you've all lived with, it's been on the books for years. That's my point. So nobody's looking to try to figure out how many qualifying calls we can get, and domestic calls are explicitly excluded from this and again. So that's what I would have to say on that. I will continue to attempt to make this as non-owned as this can be done. What I'm seeing, and I've already announced, and I will say it again, I will not vote for the ordinance as written. I made that clear. And that's all I have for tonight. It's been long. First, I want to thank everybody who came out tonight, expressed their opinions, and it was informative, and we saw a lot of democracy in action. Councilman Brubaker and Councilman Metzner have pretty much said what I intended to say, and I do think that based on what we've heard tonight, we've got to continue working until we get it right.
Tom, first off, if you have something on the table for your union and we haven't seen it, I think, Mayor, we need to get this on the agenda since February is going to be a short month because they've already now have used, it'll be a month, and they only have two months now that they're working on. All right? I don't know if there has been anything, Bruce, has there been anything that's been brought forward that we know nothing about?
We can share with you prior proposals.
Share with you the funding available for those proposals. We can bring in whatever proposal that they've submitted, if they've submitted a new one.
Have you submitted a new one? Since we recessed in December, has there been anything else that you've talked with Human Resources?
We had a meeting on December 3rd, and we submitted inviting to the city negotiating team on December 3rd.
Okay.
So I can forward that to Mayor Castle.
I just think because the time is, it's really ticking away for him as far as the extension, that we need to get something if we can get it resolved. If you can look at that, please. And that's the end of my comments.
I also appreciate hearing from folks. It is good to see democracy in action, even if people can respectfully disagree on important subjects. You know, I do, I agree with what Mr. Brubaker said. I believe everybody who is sitting up here who swore an oath to protect the health, safety, and welfare and uphold the Constitution of not only the United States, but the state of Maryland and the charter and ordinances of the city of Hagerstown. And I believe each one of the folks sitting up here, my colleagues, are diligently and faithfully executing their oaths. And with regard, I know that there was an opinion that was asked for from our city attorney. I'm not going to comment on that tonight, as it is deemed by the attorney to be privileged communication, but we will be following up with the city attorney on that opinion. But to go along with the editorial, and I didn't really read the editorial, I take any kind of praise I get from the newspaper with a grain of salt, because, you know, they'll like what you do one week and they'll hate you the next week, and I get that. But let me just emphasize this: I don't think anyone is ignoring the process. The process was laid out in the contract that was voted for unanimously, the major thrust of which, in this endeavor with Urban Partners, is to engage the community and to get stakeholder feedback. We may not like all the stakeholders in our community, but if you own a property downtown and you don't live in the city of Hagerstown, you're still a stakeholder, and we still want to hear from you. We want to know what your vision and your idea is for the properties you own or the ones that you may want to acquire. So I do think that it's very important, there is a list, just today, worked with staff on reviewing it, of over 140 people, individuals and parts of groups who will be a part of this community engagement process. So I do think it is an important issue. I'm not dismissing the concerns of Councilmember Alshar, but I do think we will be addressing them in the future, and I look forward to engaging the stakeholders in finding projects that will be a catalyst for economic development in downtown and creating linkages with the areas outside of downtown within the sustainable community area. It is a very important project. I think there has already, out of the meeting that we have already had, been seeds germinated for potential interest in development in downtown Hagerstown, and I think that it's a very exciting work that will be coming out of this, and I look forward to seeing the results of it. And that's all I have for tonight. The next item on our agenda will be the minutes.
Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented by the mayor and city council meetings held on November 26th, 2013, December 3rd, 2013, December 10th, 2013, and December 17th, 2013.
Second.
Is a motion and a second on the approval of the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor of the approval of the minutes, please say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby, all the consent agenda be approved, presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Metzner and a second by Mr. Munson for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next up is unfinished business: the adoption of an ordinance, the repeal of Chapter 155 noise, and replacement with new Chapter 155 noise control.
Mr. Mayor, hereby, move the mayor and city council adopt an ordinance to repeal Chapter 155 noise and replace it with new Chapter 155 noise control. This change is proposed for the following reasons: old Chapter 155 includes provisions which complicate enforcement of the ordinance, and staff need a better tool to protect the quality of life and public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Hagerstown from excessive noise.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Metzner, second by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Under new business, the introduction of an ordinance to increase water rates.
Mayor, hereby, move to introduce an ordinance to increase the unit cost of water rates by 2% per year for inside-city customers and 2% per year for customers outside of the city over the next five fiscal years. These rate increases are necessary to meet the revenue requirements of the water fund in order to keep the fund self-supporting as determined by the recently completed cost of service study prepared for the city by the municipal financial services group. The detailed individual rate changes in the volume charges and fixed charges by meter size are indicated by fiscal year in the body of the ordinance. The increased rates shall be effective for all bills rendered on or after July 1st, 2014, and for all bills rendered on or after July 1st of each of the subsequent four fiscal years.
Second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, let me make a comment. I don't think there's anybody sitting up here that's happy about increasing rates for water or anything else that matter. But this is reasonable, it's responsible, and if we don't do it now, at some point in the not-too-distant future, we're going to have a cliff that we're going to have to fall over and increase dramatically higher rates. This gets us where we want to be without hitting that cliff.
And since other communities were bought up tonight, we are far below, even with these increases, we are far below the water and sewer rates in surrounding comparable communities. Same with electric, by the way, which will come up later tonight.
Any other discussion? Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced. Next up is the introduction of an ordinance to increase sewer rates.
Mayor, hereby, move to introduce an ordinance to increase the unit cost of sewer rates at the following amounts for inside-city customers: FY15 at 12%, FY16 at 4%, FY17 at 4%, FY18 at 2%, and FY19 at 2%. The unit cost of sewer rates for customers outside of the city are as follows: FY15 at 12%, FY16 at 4%, FY17 at 4%, FY18 at 2%, FY19 at 2%. These rate increases are necessary to meet the revenue requirements of the wastewater fund in order to keep this fund, I'm going to, yeah, in order to keep the fund self-supporting as determined by the recently completed cost of service study prepared for the city by the municipal financial services group. The detailed individual rate changes in the volume charges and fixed charges by meter size are indicated by fiscal year in the body of the ordinance. The increased rates shall be effective for all bills rendered on or after July 1st, 2014, and for all bills rendered on or after July 1st of the subsequent four fiscal years.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Again, I mentioned this earlier, but there's a very good chart, there's, there were articles and references to rates going up commensurate with these sewer rates. They are not. They are a combination of the water and sewer rates. So there is a blip in FY15 because of the fiscal plan of the last five years being slightly under due to the fiscal climate in the region, but the rates are below double digits for the first year and below 4% for the subsequent years. So the combined rates are not the same as the rates in the sewer in that motion I just introduced.
Thanks. Any other comments, discussion? Motion's been made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced. Next up is the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 95 excessive use of police services.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, Chapter 95, excessive use of police services to repeal and to reenact Chapter 95 excessive use of city services. These amendments will establish a definition for a chronic nuisance property, amend the minimum number of police qualifying calls, which must be met prior to becoming a chronic nuisance property, and establishes the minimum number of certain code administration violations which must be met prior to becoming a chronic nuisance property. This ordinance applies to all properties throughout the city. Further, this ordinance supports the city of Hagerstown's vision and commitment to housing in neighborhoods, which is a focus on protecting and enhancing the quality of life throughout our city.
Can he get a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Alshar. Any discussion? All those in favor of the introduction of this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced. Next up is the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 197 rental facilities.
Mr. Mayor, hereby, move for the mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Hagerstown, Chapter 197 thereof, rental facilities. These amendments will require that all residential landlords obtain certification as a residential operator. The certification process requires attending a one-time free training seminar on crime-free housing. Further, these amendments require the use of a written lease, which contains a crime-free lease provision. There are no additional city fees as the result of these amendments. This ordinance supports the city of Hagerstown's vision and commitment to housing in neighborhoods, which focuses on protecting and enhancing the quality of life throughout our city.
Second.
I think I heard Mr. Brubaker first, so he gets the second there on Mr. Alshar's motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the introduction of the ordinance?
Well, again, a reminder that we will have work sessions. This is an introduction. And we will, as we worked on all these other bills tonight, we'll continue to work on this as we have the past few months.
Any other discussion? All those... All those in favor of the introduction of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced. Next up is the approval of a resolution, a lease agreement addendum, pardon me, with Potomac Building LLC for the state of Maryland Department of Social Services Church Street Parking Lot.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution authorizing the city of Hagerstown to enter into a lease agreement addendum with Potomac Building LLC for the state of Maryland Department of Social Services for the Church Street Parking Lot. Hagerstown, Maryland, to lease premises for a period of 13 years and 3 months commencing on July 1, 2010. The rental rates will be as listed in the motion, and the rent shall stay the same for July 1, 2016 through September 30, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Next up, Item F, approval of solicitation for purchase of the city's public improvement bond of 2014, a general obligation bond.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the solicitation to be circulated by Public Advisory Consultants Inc., the financial advisor to the city on behalf of the city. This solicitation for the purchase of the city's general obligation bond in an aggregate principal amount of approximately $1,735,000 will be substantially in the form presented to the mayor and council. PAC is hereby authorized to circulate such solicitation substantially in the form so provided, with such changes as may be agreed to by the city administrator and the acting director of finance. Following a receipt of responses to the solicitation, the mayor and council will adopt a resolution identifying the purchaser of the bond and fixing final details of such bond.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Alshier.
This is in relation to the presentation we received a few weeks back about the alternative approach to financing, correct?
Yes, private placement.
Okay.
Yes, private placement.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries.
I'd like to abstain.
Abstain. We have one abstention. Did you get that, Ms. Spickler? The next item on the agenda is Item G, approval of an amendment to the power service agreement with Allegheny Energy Supply Company.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve the amendment number four to the power service agreement between the city of Hagerstown and Allegheny Energy Supply Company, LLC. The existing power service agreement has been extended for a period of two years from the initial expiration date of May 31, 2015, to the new expiration date of May 31, 2017. The megawatt hour charge for service during this aforementioned two-year period will become $51.50.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment, this act that we perform now reduces rates in the future, and I'd like to thank all the people in the city who were involved with making this come about. We don't get many opportunities to reduce rates, and we appreciate them.
And I would also say the same thing. Not only is this a rate reduction, but unless you're gonna tell me I'm wrong, Mike, the last two or three times we've done things for electric, the rates have been reduced against it. So this is the third rate reduction we've had in a row, and it is somewhat frustrating for those who live in the city but not in the old city limits to find out how much cheaper your neighbors get their electricity when they're hooked up to our system.
That'd be me.
20%.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, we're voting.
I said aye.
Oh, okay.
We both said aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the amendment is approved. Next up, approval of construction of the Memorial Park Phase II.
Now I can feel the Allegheny power.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval for the expenditure funds for the construction of Memorial Park Phase II in the amount of $120,000. Project is funded by program open space funds, excise tax funds, and the balance to be taken from fiscal '14 CDBG neighborhood parks budget. I further authorize staff to complete the work and enter into contracts for trade-type work. Phase II includes the plaza landscaping, lighting, fountain, memorial walls, historic markers for events, and character count markers.
Second.
Got a motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Well, yes, I just want to point out that this is funded with the state of Maryland program, open space funds, excise tax funds, which are developer fees, and CDBG funds, which are federal funds. So we're getting a great park without investing local tax dollars.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Next item is Item J, approval of contracts. Oh, by the way, if you're a careful reader of the, the text, we have taken Item H, the sun's firework schedule, off of the agenda for this evening to follow up on a question by council members about a particular firework event, so that, that will come back on our schedule soon. Now we're on Item J, approval of contracts for 4353 West Washington Street.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of contract RFP-13-AR-13 for asbestos removal, 4353 West Washington Street, to Hepaco LLC of Baltimore, Maryland, in an amount not to exceed $70,000. I further move for the approval of contract 13-13-M-10 for the demolition and renovations to the rear of 43 to 53 West Washington Street, to Milton Stamper Builders of Hagerstown, Maryland, in the amount of $197,940. Funding for both contracts is from the following, CDBG demolition of property fund, CDBG commercial rehab of city-owned building fund, and proceeds from the sale of public school property.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
Yes. Consistent with my previous comments, I, again, voice my preference that we demolish the structure behind 4347 in lieu of placing a roof on it, and in spite of, you know, the obvious, I think that this money would be better spent on focusing on the reconstruction of 49 to 53, the larger building.
Any other discussion? Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Have four votes for and one vote against, and the contracts are approved. Item K, approval of management services for Potterfield Pool.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to approve three-year contract for pool management services at Potterfield Pool with American Pool Enterprises of Columbia, Maryland, beginning with the 2014 pool season.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Already on.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the contract is approved. Last, but certainly not least, is the approval of city funding, support for the Maryland Theater.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and council approval of $260,000 in city funding to support the Maryland Theater's 24-month capital infrastructure program as outlined in the theater's presentation to the mayor and council on January 14, 2014. The theater has projected a total cost of $1,535,000 to complete projects including ceiling restoration and repair, upgrades to the boiler and HVAC, floor surface repair and installation of new seating, and theatrical lighting upgrades. The city's $260,000 in funding will match the $260,000 in private contributions already received for the project, and is conditioned on Washington County providing matching funding of $260,000 or more. The source of the city's $260,000 contribution is a portion of funds Hagerstown received from the prior sale of the Army Reserve Center to Washington County.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. I will only say for discussion purposes that I was informed earlier today that the county has approved $300,000, so we're very grateful that they took Mr. Brubaker's challenge and then exceeded it to match the city's level of funding, but I don't think there's anyone who hesitates to vote for this tonight. I'll be surprised if anyone votes against it. Any other discussion?
Just one point, which is kind of belittled now that you've said that. But I, I would have only said that I would have voted for this without the condition that the county put up the 260K. Of course, I can easily say that easier now that you've just said that.
Is it you, sir?
Thanks for ruining the thunder.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the Maryland Theater gets money. And with that, we will be adjourned. Thanks, everybody.